Chair, the meeting is now being recorded.
Thank you. I would like to call the regular meeting of February 24, 2025, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Secretary please call roll?
Commissioner Benninger?
Present.
Commissioners Camilla?
Present.
Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Pham?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Vice Chair Ramos?
Present.
Chair Oliva?
Here.
Chair Quorum has been reached at 5:43.
Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to remind my fellow commissioners to turn your microphones on when speaking and off when not speaking. And when speaking, please place the microphone about four inches away from you. Thank you. Members of the public may attend Planning Commission meetings in person or virtually via Zoom. I now invite the Commission's Secretary to describe the way the public can access and participate in the meeting.
This meeting is being livestreamed via our portal at www.santa-anna.gov.com-public-portal and to YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaanna videos. If you would like to provide public comment, you may do so in the following ways. Join the meeting via Zoom, enter meeting ID number 88593944996. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, select the hand icon to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the name you entered. You can also join the meeting by calling 669-900-6833. Enter meeting ID number 88593944996. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, press 9 to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the last three digits of your phone number. After you're called upon, you may press number 6 to emit yourself. For those who are attending this meeting in person and would like to provide public comment, please fill out a request to speak form located in the lobby and turn it into a secretary. All speakers will have three minutes to speak. I will alert you when your time is up.
Moving on to public comments on non-agenda or non-public hearing items. Secretary, does anyone wish to speak?
If you're attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into a secretary. If you're participating via Zoom and would like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon. Once you're called, please emit yourself and state your name for the record. If you're calling in and would like to comment on this item, please dial 9. And once you're called, you may emit yourself by pressing 6. State your name for the record. I will wait for a few seconds. Chair, we don't have any speakers.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve Item A, minutes from February 10, 2025, and Item B, excused absences?
I move. I second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Wu and a second from Commissioner Benninger. Secretary, please call for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Benninger?
Aye.
Commissioners Camilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Pham?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ramos?
Aye.
Chair Oliva?
Aye.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioner Leo absent.
That concludes the consent calendar items. Moving on to the public hearing. I will now review the process for the public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will be opened. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. The public hearing will be closed. Discussion will return to the commission with formal action taken to approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address, strictly voluntary. State whether you support, oppose, or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Please note, decisions on this matter are final unless appealed within 10 days by any interested individual or party. Recommendations on this item will be forwarded to the city council at a later date for final determination. This is the time and place for zoning ordinance amendment number 2024-02 and amendment application number 2024-03, amending certain sections of Article 19, the Transit Zoning Code, Specific Development Number 84, for Chapter 41, zoning of the Santa Ana Municipal Code, addressing industrial land uses, nonconformities, and operating standards, and amending the City of Santa Ana zoning map to remove the light industrial and heavy industrial suffixes from certain properties within the within the specific development 84 district boundary. Before we begin, do any commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item?
Hi, everyone. So, legal counsel for the Planning Commission has recommended that I do not participate in tonight's discussion of this item out of an abundance of caution, as it has not yet been determined if I have a conflict. The potential conflict is because of my place of residency. At this point, I will be leaving the meeting.
Yep, uh, oh. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to note for the record that I did get a communication from Patrick Streeter on behalf of one of the impacted, oh my gosh, businesses in the area. And I'll need the ex parte form to put it for the record.
Thank you. Principal Planner Margarita Macedonio will provide a presentation.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair Hu Lef and the rest of the Planning Commissioners. So, we are here today to go over Item 1 on your agenda, the Transit Zoning Code Ordinance and Map Amendments. So, we just want to be clear that our application is stating that the Zoning Ordinance Amendment, ZOA, number 2024-02 and Amendment Application, number AA2024-03, is before you. The location of the Transit Zoning Code Specific Development Area is in Ward 6 primarily, especially with the location of the industrial uses. However, we did want to clarify that there is a section of the downtown neighborhood that falls within Ward 5, for your reference. So, what we're proposing is to update the Transit Zoning Code SD 84 to remove the industrial overlay. We're proposing text edits and code changes to address these industrial land uses. So, tonight, as part of your agenda packet and recommended actions, we have three things. One is to adopt a resolution to make findings pursuant to Public Resources Code, Section 21166, and to adopt the addendum to the Transit Zoning Code Environmental Impact Report. And this is referenced through State Clearing House Number 2006071100. The second recommended action is that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council to adopt an ordinance to approve ZOA 2024-02. This would be amending certain sections of Article 19 of the Transit Zoning Code Specific Development 84 of Chapter 41, zoning chapter 4 of our Santa Ana Municipal Code. The third recommended action is to adopt an ordinance to approve the Amendment Application 2024-03. And this would be amending the zoning by removing the light industrial M1 and heavy industrial M2 suffixes that are connected to certain properties within the SD 84 zoning district as it's designated in the City of Santa Ana's zoning map. An overview of tonight's presentation will include some background information, the components of the project that's before you tonight, that cover the map change, the nonconforming provisions, operating standards, updates to permitted uses, and more about the new amortization process. We want to highlight the proposed regulations and what the goals entail. We want to share how we have been sharing and how we shared information as of last week. Where this project stands in terms of SEQA, the addendum that is before you tonight for recommendation, the fiscal impact associated with this project. And we'll review the recommended actions and move into discussion. So, as part of the background, this is the existing Transit Zoning Code designation map. We've added the French Court neighborhood to the north of the boundary since we have the section west of Penn Way and north of Washington Avenue. That covers part of the French Court neighborhood. And also the properties that are east, I'm sorry, west of Santiago Street. Those are, those fall within the historic French Park neighborhood. And as was mentioned at the study session, we have historic neighborhoods that encompass the Transit Zoning Code, including Logan, the Lacy neighborhood, downtown neighborhood. We have our train stations, Santa Ana Regional Transit Transportation Center, and the Civic Center. We also see the zoning designations that were approved from 2010 when the changes to the zoning of this district were first established. We thought it was important to provide context for the Planning Commission and the public who is hearing this public hearing. And this has to do with calls for service, and it's connected to why we are here. As you all are aware, the city council adopted a moratorium that's been in place and is set to expire on April 15, 2025. And so, part of that was the experience, the concerns, the lived experiences that we were finding out about and how those were also communicated with our public safety units. So, this information was referenced in the initial moratorium ordinance documents, but we just wanted to make you aware that for the Transit Zoning Code area, we received from the period of March 2023 to July 2024, 18,700, more than that, calls for service. And this had to do with a variety of patrol checks, disturbances, traffic-related issues. And it breaks down for those, out of the 18,736, 1900, just over 1900, had to do with collisions, vehicle impounds, domestic violence, or municipal code violations from that same period. We wanted to understand during the time of the moratorium, what kind of calls were being received from the Logan and Lacy neighborhoods. And so, we received this data that the emergency responses were in these specific neighborhoods. And we also inquired with our fire authority a little bit more detail on the types of emergencies within the neighborhood that were received in whole. And it looked like more of the life support types of calls, critical medical emergencies in this area, in these two neighborhoods. We've also asked for some updated information from OCFA in terms of the health-related calls. And so, we noticed incrementally, there have been more health-related calls when it comes to health emergencies, respiratory issues, cardiac arrest. And for 2024, the recent data from OCFA tells us that in Logan and Lacy neighborhoods, we received 312 calls for, calls for service, emergency-related calls. And 250 of those indicate that these are a high demand for medical-related services that OCFA is responding to. And a fraction of those calls were related to traffic accidents, fire incidents, unauthorized burning in this area, and alarm activations. We also have some photos capturing some of the conditions to share with you what we're seeing, what's being shared with us, but also to make you aware. The location that you see before you is Second Street at Garfield Avenue, looking east. And so, as you can see, the contrast between the new developments, the residential developments that have been there. And right across, you have some of the older industrial areas open. You can see from this lens where the impacts are. And so, there's an expectation when the Transit Zoning Code was passed, when it was updated and allowed for more construction of high-density housing and opportunities for new homeowners to come in the area. The assumption was that at some point, you know, there would be more opportunities to develop more, but also for these uses to be phased out. The second image, we are looking from Logan Street, from Washington Avenue, and we're looking south. So, this is the Logan neighborhood where you have a lot of the homes that have been there for generations. The homeowners have been able to pass that home along to their next generation, their children, their grandchildren. But very close to that, you see some of these heavier uses, open lots, storage. Some of the examples of complaints that we've received are rats, a lot of vermin, and the time of day that a lot of the trucks are traveling through Logan Street, Washington Street, Stafford, to get to Lincoln, and how at times, these trucks are taking over the street, especially on weekends when folks know that the police department or, you know, the city code enforcement may not be available on call, but that's the reality. And so, this is what you're seeing from this lens. You see a concentration of those industrial uses on the left side, and on the right, you see the housing that's been there for some time. And then, from a distance, you can see like the newer development looking further south to the, to the right. This third image is from Fourth Street, from Santa Fe, looking northbound. And so, you can see from the dust and the debris along this road. This is a, a public road, but it's been very utilized. And there's a lot of dust that has been present, the vehicles, the traveling of equipment and machines and moving through this creates a condition that concerns residents that are located to the east and to the west about what kind of emissions is happening, what is being, what is not contained, what is not enclosed, to try to mitigate some of that exposure. This next image, we're looking northwest from Standard at First Street. And we see a problem here, and it's evident from the lack of maintenance, the multiple fires that have been reported in this structure. And you can imagine with the winds, the Santa Ana winds blowing, the type of disturbance that could be created for the homes that live just north of this location. And so, this has been a problem for some time. And so, we think that the proposed amendments will help us address the violators such as this one to be able to try to mitigate and try to change what we're seeing right now so that we can have more opportunities for a cleaner area for the community. We have a photo here of, this is the side view to Austin Hardwoods. They have been a business here for some time. We've had an opportunity to, to meet with the owners and other owners about what operators are doing to maintain it, to comply with the operating standards. And the Transit Zoning Code was intended to help businesses to be able to, to remain as long as they're abiding by the operating standards and to be able to provide jobs and employment. And so, we just want to highlight that this is a business that although they're doing their very best to maintain, they're also being affected by some of the other uses adjacent or to the side on Sixth Street. This view is from the first, the top level of the parking structure at our train station. We're looking onto Santiago Street. We're looking southwest, and we see a lot of the open operations from a recycle, open air recycling facility and trash sorting facility. The complaints that we have received have to do with the queuing of the trucks that are left turned on. And knowing that this is close to Garfield Elementary, this is close to some of the other residences that are just trying to walk around the neighborhood, to other businesses who are not a problem, who are being affected by the queuing that's happening. We also wanted to, as you may be aware, there's a protected bike lane here. And so, you have the adjacent metal recycling facility, you have this facility, no ability for somebody to ride their bike to go through, and a safety hazard for someone who's walking their child to go to and from school or to access our train station, which is widely used. So, the proposed amendments are intended to address these issues here. We'd like to go into the project components. So, right now, when we're, right now, you have the map that was shown earlier that presents the overlay zones, the M1 and M2. Through the map change, we are recommending to remove the M1 and M2 overlay zones that are within the Transit Zoning Code. So, that's what you see removed from this map change. Nothing else changes. We just wanted to pinpoint where Garfield Elementary School is. We also have Davis Elementary just north in the French Court neighborhood. And we have the other neighborhoods that were referenced earlier. When we're going over the businesses that are affected, there are businesses that are, that have the M1 and M2 designation within the overlay. We have close to 100 of those businesses in this area. And the range of uses, they vary from industrial storage, manufacturing, auto service and repair, warehouse, recycle center, wholesale, tow yard, industrial retail, and a crematory. We have some information, they have the information, that we wanted to highlight that's with you. We have some GIS maps that show the representation of the businesses in the overlay zone for your reference. So, we have a map that shows the pinpoints of where each of the businesses is located. We also have information that shows code enforcement activity associated with these businesses. Mr. Ty, did you want to? Okay, sorry. And we also have a map that shows the external regulatory agency permits that are issued to a number of these businesses for emitting, storing, handling hazardous materials, particulate matter. And we'll go over that, but we just wanted to reference that because that is connected to the questions and the feedback that we received on, you know, how many businesses are we talking about? So, this is some reference material that we have for you so that you can make connections with which business that's on the list. You can see where they're located. You can see what code enforcement activity is affecting some of these businesses. And you would also see what kind of external regulatory agency permits are provided to some of these businesses. Not all of them receive it, but this is just to give you some insight. Oh, yes.
Just to clarify, there wasn't sufficient maps to distribute to all in attendance tonight. So, some folks are sharing maps. In addition, the maps have also been posted to the city's project webpage. It's the city's moratorium page, if you want to access that as well.
Thank you. So, now, we wanted to go into the nonconforming provisions and operating standards that are being recommended. Based upon feedback that we have received and questions, we just thought it was really important to clarify some of these definitions to you and to the public here. So, we've established a definition for a nonconforming industrial use. So, what we're talking about is a use established on any parcel, building located within the boundaries of the Transit Zoning Code that's listed in the uses permitted industrial, which is M1 or M2 of the chapter, but they are no longer permissible through what is being proposed as amendments to this article. That is the definition of a nonconforming industrial use. We've also established a clarification on a noxious use here in the Transit Zoning Code. And how we are defining that is a nonconforming industrial use that's located 1,000 feet, linear feet, from a public park, a school, K through 12, or a residential property, and whose primary business operations would involve two or more of the following. So, if the business use emits, generates, discharges any particulate materials, exhaust emissions, or handling, storing, or emitting, or discharging of regulated compounds or hazardous materials, chemicals, or substances, that is one of the four that would fall within a noxious use. The second has to do with operations that are regulated by or require a permit from a federal, state, or regional agency. And we've brought up that AQMD is one example. For any air emissions that are tied to some of the nonconforming industrial uses, they may receive a permit from that regulatory agency. The other is the use of storing, processing, or disposing of listed or hazardous waste. Or number four, that the operations are not contained in a fully enclosed building. We think that's important based upon some of the photos that you've seen, some of the concerns that have come. We, we do think that this helps to address that by having a defined noxious use definition and a nonconforming industrial use definition. We did think it was really important to clarify that if an existing industrial business does not meet the criteria that's included in the definition of a noxious use, which is two or more of what was reviewed earlier, then that use, that business is considered a nonconforming industrial use and not a noxious use. We thought it was important for you to, to understand that distinction. Next, we also, as part of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, it covers regulations that require for the operation of an existing legally established or nonconforming use to follow operating standards, and that in- And that in, enclosed operations, that's another example. There are standards related to air emissions, dust, standards for light glare and heat, ground vibration, outdoor storage and screening, hazardous materials, liquid and solid waste, the maintenance of the site, truck parking and loading, and hours of operation, as examples. Under the non-conforming provisions, we are proposing further limitations that affect rehabilitating buildings or structures of non-conforming industrial uses. So what we're talking about here is prohibiting the expansion of a building or a structure that is occupied by a non-conforming industrial use. However, it does allow for rehabilitation of the non-conforming industrial use if it has to do with addressing any compliance to meet Section 41-2009. And those have to do with the operating standards for non-conforming industrial uses. We have as part of the discontinuance of non-conforming noxious uses thresholds. Thresholds that trigger the loss of the non-conforming use through code violations or through the transfer of a business to a new owner. The regulations cover the abatement of public nuisance. And the regulations also establish an authority for a voluntary compliance agreement that can be coordinated with the city and the non-conforming use. The third area that reflects the proposed changes that we are covering tonight have to do with updates to permitted uses. So we're making it clear that the new uses, they must comply with the permitted use table that's referenced in, in your documents. And we're very clear that noxious and industrial types of uses have been deleted, such as body shops, open air recycling facilities, manufacturing activities. We received some questions about the definition of artisan craft production with limited onsite production. So as an example, we wanted to review this modified definition. And what we're covering, what we're proposing is a specialized commercial facility that has a retail-facing operation that's open to the public. The products that are typically made by hand or with a restricted level of automation to demonstrate that artistic skill. The onsite production activities would include design, production, processing, printing, assembly, treatment, testing, repair, and packaging, and incidental storage. So the products that are, are some examples include electronics, food products, furniture making, beverages, leather products, clocks and watches, jewelry, clothing, metalwork, furniture and fine woodworking, glass ceramics, paper, paper products, soaps, perfumes, lotions, together with other ancillary training and or educational program activities. As reviewed in the study session, the uses that are not listed in the permitted uses table or are explicitly listed as not permitted are not allowed under the proposed regulations. And these examples are drive-through facilities, crematories, car washes. Questions surfaced about a new amortization process and what is the city's vision or intent to, to use this. And we thought it was important to define it, to define what amortization is. A legally established tool is how we define it, that provides a reasonable transition period for owners to phase out a non-conforming use. This quote grace period, this would allow for owners to recuperate their investments made before the use must cease. And it serves as a lawful equivalent to just compensation. The city also may consider amortizing certain non-conforming industrial uses based on factors that are highlighted in this ordinance. We think it's really important to share that when and if the city elects to eliminate a use through this amortization process, the decision would be determined by an independent hearing officer based on an individualized assessment of the use. This process allows us to have a, a framework, to develop a framework to phase out the non-conforming industrial businesses, and it would be using data, metrics, operational characteristics. It would require that the hearing officer that's retained for the purpose of administering this amortization provision that they must possess land use and legal background. There's no question about that. The independent hearing officer would determine the reasonable amortization period. This is within the limits of subsection B in the ordinance for terminating non-conforming uses or structures. The period established for amortization for a non-conforming use is to be discontinued or removed from a site or sites. That's what this process does. The hearing officer is the one who's issuing the determination and the compliance. And there are consequences for failure to comply with the hearing officer's determination. And we wanted to focus a little bit more on the role of the hearing officer. We did mention about possessing a background in law, urban planning, public administration, or a related field. We have hearing officers already on retainer with the city. And so they are involved in adjudicating certain code enforcement appeals and other matters. This is a tool that's utilized by cities to provide a neutral and impartial forum for dispute resolution. And thereby, this would help increase the procedural fairness and the public trust associated with this process. Hearing officers, they bring a specialized expertise. They have to navigate these types of complex regulatory frameworks. And having them involved can help streamline the hearing process and lead to more of an informed decision-making when it comes to these uses. So the proposed ordinance requires that any hearing officer retained for the purpose of administering the amortization provisions, they must, they must possess land use and legal background. We just thought it was very important to emphasize that because that we want you, we want you to be assured that this is something that we are factoring in, in terms of the role of the hearing officer. We wanted to take you to why we're doing it. What are the goals of the proposed regulations that are before you? In response to the moratorium, we want to be able to propose regulations that can help address the incompatible, the irreconcilable land uses and their resulting conflicts, to lessen the strain on residents, reduce the demand of city resources, especially code enforcement, police, fire. When responding to calls for service that are related to problematic industrial operations impacting the health and the safety of the neighborhoods nearby, it's important to protect the health and safety and welfare of the existing and future residents of the transit zoning code through the use of the new amortization process to phase out and discontinue higher polluting, non-conforming industrial uses in the community. This is a step to continue the transition of the transit zoning code in 2010 to a more transit-oriented, mixed-use area, primarily focused on compatible residential and commercial development by eliminating incompatible industrial uses and establishing clear operational standards. We want to be able, through the proposed regulations, pursue solutions that foster the compatibility between residential and non-residential land uses within the transit zoning code. And this is about enhancing the livability and improving the public health and the quality of life for, for residents, for the community in the transit zoning code. We also wanted to highlight some of the policies of our general plan that are consistent with the proposed amendments. When it comes to compatible uses, sensitive receptors, noxious, hazardous, dangerous, polluting uses, air pollution buffers are some. And the intent of the proposed regulations are rooted with the policies that aim to correct the past land use planning practices that have placed unequivocal environmental health burdens on certain neighborhoods that are now termed disadvantaged communities. And there are multiple policies in our general plan that support staff's implementation of council's policy direction. We want to highlight how we've shared information regarding the proposed regulations that you have. We continue to provide information, including the information regarding the businesses on a dedicated moratorium webpage to keep the public informed. As you are aware, January 15th, the draft regulations were posted on the page. The public hearing notice with the study session and tonight's meeting information was mailed out to all properties and addresses in the transit zoning code in English and Spanish. The information is also posted on the webpage and from July through last week, we've had 16 meetings with either individuals, business groups, neighbors, and field visits to particular sites by invitation of some of the business owners, including those here tonight. The public hearing notice was published in the OC Register. We've used different channels to provide information to our residents about the proposed regulations and other meetings. We have a environmental justice action committee that was formed as part of the general plan, EJ Policy and Implementation Action. So we've been able to make updates to that group, including two community-based organizations that participate in that group. And last week, we were able to participate and attend the Logan and Lacy residence meeting. And we also had a meeting on February 20th with a group of the industrial businesses. With regards to SEQA and the fiscal impact associated with this project, the ZOA 2024-02 and AA 2024-03 are considered a project as defined by SEQA. The city as a lead agency has determined that it is subject to SEQA guidelines and regulations, and these include Public Resources Code sections 21000 to 21177. An addendum to the Transit Zoning Code Environmental Impact Report, State Clearing House Number 2006071100, has been prepared by the city. And based on its independent review and analysis and the administrative record as a whole, and in exercising its independent judgment, hereby finds that pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15162, no subsequent EIR would be required for the proposed project. And pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15164, an addendum to the Transit Zoning Code EIR is required for the adoption of the ordinances. The city as a lead agency has determined that the proposed ordinance and map amendment are subject to SEQA guidelines and regulations, as mentioned earlier. An addendum to the Transit Zoning Code EIR has been prepared by the city to evaluate the impacts of the proposed ordinance amendments. And lastly, there is no fiscal impact associated with the project. To recap, we wanted to go over the recommended actions we have before you. And these are recommendations that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council, one, adopt a resolution to make findings pursuant to Public Resources Code, Section 21166, and adopt the addendum to the Transit Zoning Code Environmental Impact Report, State Clearing House Number 2006071100. Two, adopt an ordinance to approve zoning ordinance amendment, 2024-02, amending certain sections of Article 19, the Transit Zoning Code, Specific Development Number 84 of Chapter 41 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code. And three, adopt an ordinance to approve Amendment Application Number 2024-03, amending the zoning by removing the M1 light industrial and M2 heavy industrial suffixes from certain properties within the SD84 zoning district boundary as designated on the City of Santa Ana zoning map. We also wanted to reference information that was provided to you in your packet. It's a one-pager that talks about clarifications that have been provided to ZOA Number 2024-02. These are refined edits to correct typographical information errors that were related to the numeric, alphanumeric labeling of the sections and subsections. So for the record, as part of the action, we want to include this clarification. We have determined that this clarification is non-substantive in, in nature. This concludes the presentation. And so now we can move into discussion.
Man, Chair, I got a point of order question.
Let me do the script and then we can keep going. Does the commission have any comments or questions for staff? And before I hand it over to the commissioners, I just want to make sure that we focus the conversation on the land use that the zoning code is proposing. So if we can, if we can make the questions and comments based on that, that'll focus our conversation a little bit more. But Commissioner Wu, we can start with you.
Chair and Commissioner Wu, sorry, just before, as a formality, we need to ask Commissioner Benninger if he's in the presence of any other adults with him in the teleconference location. Commissioner Benninger, did you hear that? And can you answer?
You're on mute, Commissioner Benninger. Commissioner Benninger, can you unmute yourself and let us know if you're in the presence of any other adult?
No, I'm by myself here in Cannon Beach. I'm downstairs basement of my son's house. I didn't want to express that after four days of wind, we never lost power, but we just lost power a half hour ago. And we hear it'll be another two hours before we get it back.
Oh, my goodness. Thanks for letting us know.
Yeah, I'll try. I'm on my cellphone right now and I'm I'm down to about 65% power. So I'm gonna ask my son if he has a booster. He's upstairs. And maybe extend us, but thank you.
All right. We appreciate the update, Commissioner Benninger.
And Commissioner Benninger, there's no need to have your camera on too. That could help save some power on your phone. And then lastly, if you do have any speakers with you who wish to speak, you'll need to let us know as well. Thank you.
Very good.
Commissioner Wu, we can start with you.
Just to put in perspective and clarification of all the materials we have, this big 250-page package, which I just got hard to copy today, that's all the changes that that's all the changes that we're responding to SB one hundred and and all the complaints regarding the industrial use and the residential complaint. That's one thing. So all the regulation that goes under it is being clarified in this document, right? Then we got this just, you know, as we opened the meeting, and I just wanted to have clarification of how does this relate to this? And then how does these things relate to the presentation that Margarita just did? And I think that her presentation is basically taking all the discussion, the study session, all the material, pointing out the goals when we adopt this re-resolution, how we will go forward with the enforcement once all these changes go into place. And and there's a hearing officer because the code enforcement officer introduced herself earlier today. So I guess that's the cast of character in this as we meet at Gaza to look at who came here first and who occupied this land and, you know, and what are we gonna do so that we can live at good neighbors from this point on? That's just a metaphor for our discussion. So I just wanted some clarity so that we could understand how does the document relate to the voting that we're gonna be doing later? This is a supporting document that will be entered into record that will go into the changes of law and regulations and all that, right?
So I will try to answer your question, Commissioner Wu. So the the clarification document is an important one, and it's just to clarify the formatting issues, some typographical errors in the labeling of the sections. So yes, yes. So that's one of the sheets there. And then we also clarify that subsection one of Section forty-one dash two zero zero eight, the operating standards in Section ten. It also reads as follows, reflecting proposed text and underline and deleted text in strike through. So this one was not included in the previous regulations that we had proposed that we wanted to include in this in the version that you have in your public agenda packet that you received, the two hundred and fifty lengthy document. This is one of those exhibits. And so it's clarifying that automobile servicing uses, including non-conforming establishments, shall comply with the operational standards. And the last one is the subsection thirty-five B of Section forty-one dash twenty eighty, under the Definitions Section twelve of the ordinance reads as follows. So you'll see the deleted text as strike through under B, art supplies, including framing and services. So bicycles have been has been stricken out of that definition.
Commissioners Camia.
Yeah, no, I think normally I just have more questions, but at this point, I'm just trying to digest the changes and everything else. So I guess procedurally, we'll have our round of questions and then public comments, Chair. Okay. I guess the one thing I wasn't able to see in here that I wanted to understand, and I do appreciate the additional breakdown the types of businesses, but did we ever get the total for permits? So just, you know, in each category, so I know we have the matrix now, but I was just looking for that summary of, you know, how many businesses of each category we have, and I just didn't see it, but I don't know if that's available or still in preliminary draft at this point.
Sure. The maps that were handed out and distributed to the public and to the commission include the total number of industrial businesses within the Transit Zoning Code. That's a hundred and twenty-seven. Of those, there's a subcategory of noxious uses. Those would be the industrial businesses that have a permit from an outside regulatory agency, and I believe those are forty-eight.
Okay, so we presume essentially you can kind of mark down whatever I see is having either the CEWRS or AQMD permit. That would be potentially one of the noxious uses businesses on, right? I know it's got to have two, but I presume that once it has one of the permits, it probably has the other one to kind of go along with having some sort of hazardous material on site.
Yes. So there's different agencies that are referenced in that table. So, yes, if they're receiving an external permit, it could be multiple, not just tied to one, and it depends on what is being admitted. And the data, it comes from different sources. So, yes. And also, in terms of code enforcement activity, that's something that in terms of being able to follow up on items that have not been complied, this just gives you a snapshot of what it looks like today.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, would we be able to get that as a map? I know maybe might not even need it by the end of today, but or sorry for this hearing, but you'll refer to whatever subsequent hearing, if we can have those kind of pulled out. It it just makes it a little bit easier for me to understand which noxious uses we're potentially talking about.
And Commissioner Eskemia, as you just phrased, this is meant to be informative, but not necessarily like an end-all, be-all list, as staff has determined these are noxious uses. This is sort of providing information, as you shared, a list of businesses that are industrial in nature in the Transit Zoning Code area that have outside agency permits. But this isn't a definitive list of what the city has established to be noxious uses.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, that's what I have for now.
Commissioner Fam.
Thank you, Chair. I'll ask a few questions. If I've repeated what was asked during the workday session, I apologize, but I did review it before coming, so hopefully there's no repeat. So I think from for most residents or most business owners, though, assume the worst-case scenario, if something like this would would be coming to effect, that their business would not be operational on day one. So my my first question is, let's say on day one, this was enacted. How many, I'm assuming there's a hundred and twenty-seven businesses that would be non-conforming. But how many of those businesses would be non-conforming and have two of the of the noxious use criteria labeled on them? So so that they will be forced to either go through the amortization process or, you know, voluntary shut down their business. So do we have a specific number or kind of a gauge? This is the scope of how how many businesses are actually really affected by this change or if, you know, I just wanted to know the scope of the effect.
So as mentioned, there's a list of businesses that have outside regulatory permits, which is distinct from the definition of a noxious use. So to meet the definition of a noxious use, we'd have to look at each business, business by business, to see if they meet the four, the criteria that's listed under the definition. In our view, it looks like there'd be less than twenty that would actually meet that definition.
So less than twenty businesses that would need to consider alternatives, either alternatives to operating, operation, or alternatives to amortization.
So those businesses would be categorized as noxious uses. However, there isn't anything in the ordinance that would say on day one, even if you are a noxious use, that you'd be forced to close.
Right.
So there are different triggers built into the ordinance. So currently, as proposed, the ordinance states that those noxious uses can continue operating. However, if if that business meets some of the triggers that are built into the proposed ordinance, at that point, they would lose their legal non-conforming status. And the triggers would be for noxious uses only would be when the business changes hands. So when a new certificate of occupancy is required, or if it meets the three listed code enforcement triggers that are unique to only noxious uses. For non non-conforming industrial, those triggers would not apply. There isn't anything in the proposed ordinance that would take away their ability to transfer ownership of the business.
So there's no day one hit list, essentially?
There is not.
Okay.
I just wanted to add, Commissioner, that the amortization provides us the tool to go after the bad actors. The ones that we've had a problem with for a while.
Right.
We don't have that right now. And so by having that tool, we would be able to exercise our ability to begin that process, and that process would involve economic analysis, factoring in the investments that that business has made and going through a process. So just to be clear, that we don't have that avenue right now. This would allow us to use it, and we would be very we we have to consider which businesses we can apply this tool to. We don't have the resources or capacity to go from day one. That that's not the intent of the amortization that we have in the proposed regulations.
Good. That's why I would like to clarify as well. And, you know, you propose a vision of the area where the use is eliminated. Let's say for some reason the residents or the city chose to pursue not formalizing what you've proposed today. In fifty years, what are we looking at in this area particularly? Or is it continued degradation of the of those businesses? Since we can't really enforce the way they maintain their properties? Or during your discussion with the business owners, there's been proactive kind of proactive commitment to say we will upgrade our businesses, we will upgrade our facilities as long as we're able to keep our businesses intact. Have there been that discussion? Or is it just have have it just been? We'll deal with it when it happens. We're just hoping that it doesn't get approved, and then we'll, if it doesn't get approved, then we'll just operate as we have been operating and continue to operate.
So part of the direction that the City Council gave staff is to look at what type of code amendments, regulations could be proposed to address the land use conflicts, the issues. So last year, when we presented the ordinance to adopt a moratorium, that was part of the the information. You have some problem businesses that are, and you have a lot of code enforcement activity. And so we're trying to use the tools that we have right now. But there are some that will further exacerbate the incompatibility of having a heavy polluting use next to residential. And that's why we're here. That's part of the reason why we're following up through the Planning Commission first to get that input so that we can report back to the City Council.
Is there no mechanism? Because I I looked at the table of uses and a lot of these uses either are permitted by by right, used to be, or currently are permitted by by right, or are perred by a CUP. So isn't there a current mechanism in place for us to revoke a business operation or cease a business operation if they violate their original CUP?
Commissioner, I think it's the regulatory landscape is complicated in that regard. When you consider the different types of permits that exist in this area, you have a handful with conditional use permits. Conditional use permits afford a long-term entitlement advantage to the owner of the property, but are in exchange something that has conditions and revocability. Well, firstly, many of these conditional use permits were done well before any of us were here and contain virtually zero conditions of approval. Secondly, revocation on a case-by-case basis is extremely complex and subject to legal action mediations. It's it's not easy. So when you consider that just alone with CUPs, now we can look at the by-right uses. They are subject to normal code enforcement channels, right? An escalating series of citations and warnings that eventually can lead to civil or criminal prosecution. Again, case by case, costly, resource intensive. So when you factor in these these elements, one can see why the City Council adopted the moratorium last April unanimously, and then extended it for the period of until April this year, again unanimously, because doing it on a case-by-case basis is not only resource intensive and draining on on, you know, finances, not to mention other factors, but doesn't take into account the big picture of what, for example, the general plan has long sought to accomplish in this area since 2010, when the Transit Zoning Code was adopted, or what the general plan continues to seek through the general plan update that this commission voted to approve in 2022. So it's important to consider, like, yes, there are there are other tools through CUP, you know, modifications, suspensions, revocations, or certificate of occupancy revocations, whatever. But at the end of the day, it's on a case-by-case basis, and it's it's part of that landscape that Margarita was citing earlier with the calls for service. It's not a sustainable way of addressing the land use conflicts that exist in this area long term.
To add on to what Ali has just discussed and outlined, the existing land use authority within the Transit Zoning Code has the two industrial overlays, including the M one and M two. With the overlays, it allows for industrial uses not only to continue, but it also allows industrial uses to come in that have not been established there before, to come in as long as they are enlisted use within the overlay zones. And therefore, it perpetuates it in ways that legal non-conforming or the non-conforming uses standard basically does not really apply. It leaves it up to the property owners to convert the property, per se. But not necessarily any legal mechanism that would terminate, as you mentioned, a conditional use permit or revocation process. So I hope that clarifies the existing complexity of this landscape here.
I think it does, because, you know, just in general, just the way the language is, even a permanent use is subject to compliance of all applicable provisions of the Santa Ana Municipal Code, right? So just on, just taking it by face value, I would assume that there would be mechanisms or ability for the city to regulate uses that are not compatible. So at the crux of it is, I wanted to know if there is no way to to enforce it, even if it says that the businesses need to comply, but there's really no way to enforce it, and if that's the reason why we need to introduce this this new language to to the to the code.
The introduction of the proposed regulations would add additional parameters for the city to be able to address land use violation code issues. So it adds additional layers and opportunity for the city to be able to pursue these non these non these conflicting land uses that are existing in the area.
And on another tangent here, the amortization process, I know that is not something that we, that the city would jump directly to as a solution. But do you have an estimate of how long this this process would take if a property does go down that that route? In terms of, you know, having the adjudication process, in terms of resolution, I just I just wonder how much effort the city and your department as a whole will need to invest in to kind of resolve these matters as as they arise?
I think to answer it pretty bluntly, it's going to take a significant amount of resource to deal with each amortization situation. Both in terms of staff time and funding.
Right. That's it for me for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Wu.
I have the compliment, Staff, on the hard work that you did on this, all of you guys, from legal to planning to the outreach and 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 putting together this document. In reading the document, if you read it in its entirety and and all the things that you're trying to accomplish, it does acknowledge the history on page three, going back since the eighteen hundreds. And this is an area where you put two And this is an area where you put two elements of the city that they didn't want to address and set them apart from the rest of San Antonio society. One was the Mexican-American population, uh, when the, the boundaries changed and they were more fluent in travel, traveling back and forth between Mexico and, 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 uh, Logan. And, um, the industrialization and businesses moving into, to the area as well. You had to put the junkyard somewhere and so they put it in the neighborhood, uh, where they put the other people. So then we're looking through today, I, as we encourage housing. And the housing and the picture you show there, where you have these nice apartment houses and it's overlooking these industrial area, it makes a stark contrast. In the previous hearing, we saw a crematorium blasting, okay? And all that, you know, crematorium stuff going on certain neighborhood. Yes. What I think I'm hearing and I'm seeing in the document is that you're trying to identify the bad, uh, usage. Well, you're taking away the, the industrial overlay. You're trying to define what are, um, non-compatible uses or bad uses, to put in layman's terms, from good business uses that would could stay and be compatible with the neighborhood. Uh, while everything is not perfect, at least move us forward to reaching some kind of understanding as to the kinds of things that, um, gets both sides upset, you know, junkyards, uh, uh, chemical, uh, companies and things that spew noxious stuff, uh, all about, uh, which is a, which is a good way to look at it. Uh, the thing that I, I want to be cautioned is that there are two sides to justice. One justice you're looking at is SB 100, the impact on residents. And, and that, that is true. And how it affects low-income community of which this area definitely had happened. Okay. It also got to contribute another pollutant, which is the five freeway. You know, which is spreading lead all, all over the place. And I don't know if in our study that, that's included as well. Okay. So, but there is a solution because in your, uh, responses to the, um, um, both the businesses and to the residents, there's a lot of dot put behind it. Okay. There's a lot of dot put behind the matrices that outline, you know, the, the, the laws. Then when the code enforcement goes out there or a resident complaint, there's a way to process it. Okay. So, and I'm kind of saying this because if you haven't read it, that you've been concerned with your item, either as a resident or business alone. And you didn't consider what's happening when the city hears that. And they got to go through the process of mitigating it, following up on it and coming up with some kind of collu- conclusion. That's what I seen this decision at the end is saying to us. We can't solve everything today. We can't write something that anticipate every condition. However, here's some standards. This is how we're going to go move forward. And, uh, if you don't meet these or you don't want to meet these and you want to continue to be a bad neighbor, then okay, you're going to have to go some, somehow. But there's also a way forward. If I'm, if I'm correct, uh, executive director, because I don't want to put words in your mouth for, for you and Ali. Uh, if you do want to be a good business, good, uh, and good corporate neighbor to you, to you, to your resident, uh, here's what you can do. Okay. Now, as I understand it though, at this point today, if you were to go in to get a permit to mitigate some of these things, everything is not clear yet. Right? Uh, and I guess if I was a business, I would be going, okay, can I trust you? Maybe not at this point because it's not, it has not been passed. That's hard to be, you know, to, to, uh, make our decision and pass it to the city council. So, um, and I think that's where, um, we're asking these questions so that both sides begin to understand a lot of work has been done to bring out your concern. And then at the same time, a lot of work's been done to record what that is. Then there's a lot of things we don't see behind the scene where you guys work those late hours, you know, talking about, you know, how can we do this? How can we impact that? So, uh, that's where I kind of see we're reaching today. And in reading, um, the details, um, I'm, I'm kind of marveling at, at what you have thought of and what you heard and what you pointed out. And so I'm kind of curious myself, uh, where do we go from here if we approve it? And that's more of where my question would be hitting, um, after we go through the hearing. Um, and if I could get a little more clarity on some of those questions because it's hard to give assurances to, um, uh, two parties that, that, that do not trust each other and don't trust the party that is negotiating the deal. I, I, I understand that. Uh, but I think that if we were to really look and read a document, we see that we're trying to move forward in, in a direction to, to get a facility. We don't want to risk, uh, revisit this. We're trying to correct all the poor planning in the past and, uh, and inconsistencies that we have throughout the whole city, which is not your fault, uh, we all inherit that. But here we are today trying to, uh, 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 reach what we put into the general plan, which is a city where we can have jobs, we can have, uh, good housing and we can have a, a, a good, healthy, uh, community. So, um, um, that's where I kind of see us. And any rhetoric, uh, rhetoric that kind of devises, uh, in not seeing that we're trying to go in the right direction. I think it's troubling for me because, you know, it's, it's difficult to hear that when you can actually read it. When you read it, you don't have the emotions. You just have the words in black and white. So that's where I'm kind of going.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. And I think you put into everyday language, uh, what we try to express in terms of the goal and the purpose of this ordinance. This, just to answer some of the question, this ordinance and these changes didn't happen today. Uh, we, the city did not change the general plan on this area in 2022. The city did not change the zoning to look towards this area for development of mixed use uh, and promoting residential uses in 2022. This was done back in 2010, where the city applied a new general plan and a new transit zoning code to steer this area towards less industrial and towards mixed use and compatible uses with residential and the downtown area. What the city council in 2000, uh, last April essentially asked staff to do is that as a result of the slow pace of change that have been seen in terms of, number one, the transition of development towards, um, you know, more compatible uses. What in fact we're, we were seeing is that as some of these industrial properties becoming available, that new industrial uses come in. And potentially perpetuating the type of impacts that, um, are continuing to impact these residential uses. So that's one component. Secondly, um, the council then is asking for staff to look at how can we address the transition of these property as was originally intended in a way that we don't further deteriorate or introduce new industrial uses into the area. And hence the responses is that at the minimum and at the, the most basic level, this proposed ordinance, um, remove and stop the ability for new industrial uses to be introduced into this area at the minimum, right? By removing the overlay zones. What it also does is that establishes operational requirements for industrial businesses that continue to stay and are considered non-conforming businesses. Those operational standard, if they are met, uh, and we believe that they have been designed to mitigate and minimize the impact between industrial uses and residential uses so that they can coexist in some level of harmony and not have the current impacts as they do on the health, safety and enjoyment of the properties between industrial and, and residential uses. So that's what it does. But it also further defines what a noxious use is. And with the noxious use, what it does is that it's subject to another level of potential applications of threshold for, um, mitigating or basically transitioning out the non-conforming uses through the, um, identification of the operational requirements, their permitting and, 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 uh, regulatory, um, operational requirements through state of regional.
Provide the legal.
Correct. So that way noxious use can be addressed differently than just your non-conforming industrial uses. So we believe that as a good actor in the current zoning, some businesses can potentially, to answer your question, stay indefinitely until they transition out on their own. But the tools that we're adopting allows the city to evaluate which businesses that are impacting residents the most, that are not conforming or complying with operational standards. So we can pursue it and address it through a multiple, a number of, of tools that we have, which includes nuisance abatement, amortization requirements, um, through the legal process or potentially through our code enforcement process as well.
The amortization process is sort of like, um, you're given time to fix it or you're given time to move out?
I think the staff gave a pretty good definition of amortization, uh, at the end of the day. It's a process between the city and the business, um, that, uh, the subject business. A process for determining a time period for terminating the use on the property.
Okay. What I heard there was that you will work it out with the business.
It's a process. We both have, uh, it's a process that, um, um, we can either impose on the business through our process or it could be something that is done through the, uh, the compliance agreement process, which is voluntary compliance.
And, and that does seem wise because some things require more discussion.
Commissioner Benninger, if you want to come off mute and share any comments or questions you have for staff?
Thank you. I was waiting for my turn. We have legal there, one question, and I appreciate the city allowing me to go to the, uh, um, yearly, um, planning meetings with other planning commissioners and planning people up at Nixon's library. And one issue came up in this discussion about the taking, the unfair taking. And though we're not taking any land per se, um, we are restricting. It was brought up point by attorney up there that if you squeeze a business out of existence that it cannot function, that's also a taking. And when I look at some of these regulations, um, and, and I, I do admit, I, I'm very supportive of, of clean neighborhoods. I'm very supportive of noise limits. I'm very supportive of not running trucks 24 hours a day, um, to add to all that noise. I would just like to ask our legal help if they had looked at this from a position of could the city be in trouble of being accused of taking from these businesses and thus end ourselves up in court? Can legal comment on that?
Thank you. I'm going to, um, defer to staff first to see if they had any comments about that. Um, and if necessary, I'll discuss a little bit. There's, there's been a lot of comments made, just general legal posturing about, um, takings and other, other legal matters. Um, and I, I, I can address that briefly, but I, I want to give staff the opportunity to talk about that first.
Thank you, legal counsel. So the planning commission, as part of tonight's recommendation, is to look at the proposed draft regulations and to recommend whether or not the commission believes these regulations, uh, would achieve the goal of addressing the moratorium. Um, in terms of the question related to taking and, you know, the regulatory taking, that is a legal issues that is not, number one, a part of the discussion here today. Are we going to potentially be looking at being challenged for the proposed regulations? That's always an option, the case for any city ordinance. In terms of whether or not we believe what we're proposing is sound land use practices are legally defensible, we have reviewed this with our legal team. Uh, we have reviewed this with our land use consultants and believe that the regulations that we have proposed here are legally defensible.
I, I can add that, um, a lot of the, um, comments that have been made about takings and, and other legal issues um, haven't been very specific. So it'd be very difficult to, um, try to speculate as to what those legal challenges would be. Um, just generally a taking is the, the taking of property without just compensation. And I think we've, uh, staff has had some, um, has provided some information about amortization and how amortization, uh, relates to that. Um, so, um, I, I think that's, that's been addressed in the, in the FAQs. So if you, that, that's just general information for you. If you have any other questions, we can talk about that. But I think staff is, was able to provide some information about that in the staff report and in the FAQs.
Okay. Um, we do have organizations, uh, EPA, uh, Water Board, Cal OSHA, all these facilities. And if we do have polluters in the area, and I'm kind of thinking that crematorium, why have they not acted to shut some of these down if they're in violation?
I can take that, Commissioner Benninger. So these agencies, these agencies that you reference analyze individual permits. And the permits that they are issuing, that they are issuing allow each business to pollute a set amount into the environment. What these agencies do not do is analyze the cumulative impacts on a particular, um, neighborhood or environment. So they're specifically looking at these businesses individually, rather than looking at the collective or the whole number of businesses in one geographic area.
I can tell you from my experience with them is that they have very strict limitations, especially on particles. And I do appreciate, I read all of the, uh, 90 letters given to the city. And there's two doctors in there that talk about, um, emazema and some of the respiratory diseases caused by particulate. Uh, and they're very stringent. I can tell you from my experience of dealing with them at two different facilities, that they're very stringent on it. So I, I, I maybe will disagree with, uh, allowing, um, certain amount of pollution. There are certain limits. Um, I don't know if we even contacted them yet about where our concerns are.
Commissioner Benninger, um, to supplement and respond to your question too, that you just raised, you know, our neighborhood initiatives and environmental services section is comprised of four full-time planners whose job and primary functions it is to coordinate among these regulatory agencies in order to further implement the general plan's goals and policies on environmental justice and improving and creating safe and healthy communities in the way that you described earlier. Um, at the same time, what we're finding in working with these regulatory agencies that due to their own limitations or their own code of regulations or however they're set up, it's not producing the results that the residents need in these areas. And frankly, other business owners in those areas would benefit from if full enforcement were carried out. And that is reflected in the findings that the city council made when it adopted the moratorium uh, through the urgency ordinance last year and then extended it, that the sheer volume of complaints, the lack of thorough and follow-up responses from our partners in these outside agencies and the growing, growing volumes of calls for complaints that we illustrated tonight are all adding up to the fact that we cannot only rely on these partners in our outside agencies that, um, action at the local level through revisions to this ordinance are required to see the changes that the city council laid out in its policy goals. As our assistant city manager pointed out in 2010, when it. As our assistant city manager pointed out in 2010, when it adopted the transit zoning code and the land use designations for mixed-use residential and commercial developments in that area.
Okay. Next question. I think the noise limitations are much stricter than, than our municipal code. The some of the restrictions on operational hours. Where, in this ordinance, where were those numbers drawn from? Let's talk just about the noise levels. Where were those numbers taken from? I guess, why did we end up with numbers that we did?
Commissioner Benninger, the proposed ordinance before you makes no changes to the noise standards that currently apply to the transit zoning code.
Does it make changes to the hours of operation?
Yes, it does.
Okay. If I have a business that's not, you know, I totally agree with neighbors, if it's a business, if it's vibration, yes, totally agree. But do I really care what goes on in a building as long as they're not violating, say, the noise? Peacefulness of the neighborhood? Do we really care?
Commissioner Benninger, could you kindly restate the question? I think if we heard you, you were saying.
One things I see and I have a concern is forcing all businesses to be down on a Sunday and between 10 o'clock at night and 7 o'clock in the morning. I'm kind of paraphrasing. Just kind of talk the idea of being down. If a business, small businesses, if you've ever worked in one, you definitely know that fighting time limits and things of that nature is just commonplace. And as long as we're not creating noise, disturbing neighborhoods, having deliveries late at night, traffic flows, do, to me, I think we're invading their privacy by not letting them work at night or on holidays or on Sundays. And so I have a real concern of putting that limitation on, on the businesses in that area. And so I just would like to know what the thought pattern was to put limitations like this on the buildings or on the operations. If I read it correct, it doesn't matter whether in violation of any noise or not. You're actually telling them to shut down after 10:00. You're telling them to be closed on Sunday and federal holidays. And I'm just asking, where is that coming from?
Thank you for that question. Obviously, some of the proposed changes, the goal is to help address the potential negative impact of industrial use. In this case, if approving a nonconforming industrial use to minimize the impact to adjacent properties. The proposed hours of operations, if I'm pointing it out correctly, is on section K of the proposed ordinance where it talks about the hours of operation for nonconforming industrial uses. So the hours only applies to properties that are adjacent, meaning that they are boarding a residential use. Or they are directly across the street from a residential use. In this case, where we draw the hours from, from the operational are from noise ordinance and code ordinance that addresses potential impact after certain hours of normal business hours. Let's put it that way. So the goal is to minimize the impact, but it doesn't apply broadly. It only applies to properties, industrial uses that are directly bordering a residential use, meaning sharing a property line, or they are directly across the street and fronting onto a residential property.
And Assistant City Manager Tai, I wanted to add that the issue is the concentration of the uses in some of these neighborhoods where you have light and heavy industrial on the same block as residential. So yes, these proposed hours in section K would apply to those businesses because that is the source of concerns that has been communicated to the city that was part of why this moratorium was passed by the city council, giving direction to find solutions. Well, this is one of the proposed solutions that can help mitigate that in the interim.
Okay. If I read this changes correctly, you will allow, and correct me if I'm wrong, four-story residential buildings that go in place of some of these buildings without further CPU approval? Is that correct? Did I read that correctly?
So there was, this ordinance does not contain any proposed changes to the underlying zoning that currently applies to the property. The ordinance only is proposing to remove the industrial overlay. In 2010, when the transit zoning code was adopted, all of the properties within the transit zoning code received a land use designation or a zoning designation pursuant to transit zoning code. This ordinance is not proposing any changes to that.
Okay. So if someone wants to come in and take one of the buildings down or convert one of the buildings to residential, they'll still have to go through the planning department and the planning commission?
That's correct. They would have to submit an application like any other development project application, go through the city's process and comply with all applicable development standards.
I asked a question in the last meeting about if someone owned a building, they wanted to have their family take, take over the business, and the answer came back, yes. Talking with my councilperson today, he pointed out to me that that's provided that it's within the time of amortization. So I have a bit of concern. I I don't know if this is really a proposal is to put a timeline on all these businesses? Or if we're really going to let a noncompliant business function as long as they want to function, provided that they don't violate any of the noise limits or restrictions we're putting on by this proposal? So let me ask the question this way. If person does pass the business on to a family member, is that going to be considered change in ownership and thus lose the non, non-compliance status?
So losing of the nonconforming status at time of change of business ownership would only be applicable to noxious uses. If the, if the business is considered a legal, nonconforming industrial business, there wouldn't be anything in this ordinance that would prevent the business owner from passing that business on to future owners.
Would it prevent him from selling the business to somebody?
I'm sorry, I missed that. Can you repeat that?
Would it prevent him from selling, selling the business?
No, they could sell, transfer, or pass the business on to a family member. There's nothing in this ordinance that would prevent transferability.
Okay. So he could transfer to a non-family member, sell it and transfer it that way?
That's correct for nonconforming industrial businesses.
Okay. So now if I own a building in the area, because looking at some of the letters, this point was brought up strongly. If I own a building and I want tenants to come in that are light industrial, as long as they're not classified as a noxious usage, that business could come into the area?
They would be able to continue the use. So let's say I have an existing light industrial business that is a warehouse. Then I would be able to transfer the business either through passing it along to a family member or selling to another business. There wouldn't be any issues with transfer, transferability, provided the business does not meet the definition of noxious use.
Okay. So let me put it a little simpler, just again, to help people understand. So say that I'm making widgets and I want to switch from making widgets to making satellites, all of which does not meet the noxious use facility or codes. I could go ahead and do that, correct?
Yes.
But I try to make this very simple because there are a lot of people confused as to what this restriction does or doesn't do.
So I want to respond that in the affirmative. Yes, a nonconforming business that is not classified as a noxious industrial business can continue to make the widgets under the parameters of the operational standards that we have established. They can transfer the ownership of the company making those widgets to family members, sell it to another owner who wants to continue that business. So it does not impact their rights as long as they're not a noxious business falling into two or more of the criterias that have been defined in the proposed regulations.
Okay. Okay. Could they change from widgets to making satellites if they wish?
That question actually is a really good one, and I think you understand the nuance of nonconforming. Nonconforming would means that they cannot make new widgets that were not there before.
Very good. I think you've answered my question. So the answer is no. Okay. You know, again, I want to compliment, follow up with Commissioner Wu. There's a lot of work that's gone into this, a lot of thought, a lot of long hours that I'm sure went beyond 10:00 and did, did get done on Sunday. So I do want to compliment Margaret and her group for that on it. Let's see. I'm sorry. Let me just look quickly. I'm by candlelight right now, which is, but I do have a power pack, so I should be okay power-wise. The only other, what's, what sort of police complaints are you receiving that you think is going to go away by passing this ordinance? What? I guess I'm a little confused as to what sort of complaint are you getting? Let's just take some police standpoint, you think are going to go away with this passing of, of the SD 84?
I could, I can start. So a lot of the concerns have been especially on the weekends when you have police around to respond to all of the complaints for the city, right? So we're getting calls about trucks idling, taking over the residential streets, being able to move and operate equipment without any permits. And that is, we think, by implementing these regulations that that would be mitigated because now it helps us go after those businesses that have given us more problems and not just us, but the community, more problems. We have that tool so we can focus on those businesses and at the same time be able to, you know, clarify what the focus is and why we're doing what we're doing. And at the same time, educate the community and provide, you know, more information about what to expect, you know, from these ordinances. But it is, we're hoping that it is a reduction in the concerns, the responses from police, from the fire authority, and even having more of a peaceful environment to be able to walk your dog, to be able to go shopping, to be able to be safe, because some of these, not all, but there are some of the heavier polluting open air recycling businesses that draw other issues. And so that is a problem. And that's what we're also hoping that is reduced through these proposed regulations.
To follow up on one thing that was on one of the letters was definitely taking metal apart in a parking lot. I totally agree. That's not, should not be allowed. And so I see some of that with it. There's a lot of can talk about drug reduction and unfortunately, empty buildings will bring more drug addicts than what occupied buildings do. So that's one of my, one of my concerns that I see in there. I think that's it for the time being right now. Thank you.
I have a few questions regarding the nonconforming businesses. I see on the list, some businesses don't have a business license or have illegal storage. So let's say they wanted to get on track and be like our friendly corporate neighbor. What's the timeframe for these businesses to get on, like, on, on like cities' good graces? Like, what would be the timeframe for them to be considered conforming businesses?
So if you are not a permitted business, you don't have any legal, or I don't want to say you directly, but if a business does not have business license, there is no legal standing of that business to fall under and be recognized as a nonconforming existing use in the transit zoning code. That's just an illegal business. So I want to make that very clear. But for those businesses that are currently operating with licenses and certificate of occupancy, and they're not considered a noxious use under the ordinance, they become nonconforming uses. And the operational standards would apply to those businesses. And as long as those operational standards are not being infracted upon, there should be no reason for the city to be addressing that nonconforming business.
Thank you. And then for the, for the operational standards, on the clarification sheet, you explain that everything that's underlined is essentially something new that's been added, an amendment. So from what I see, starting page 24, all of these operational standards are essentially brand new that have been created through some sort of listening session, some sort of city meeting, neighborhood meeting. And it's a lot to put together. So these are just standards that have been drafted to essentially give us a framework to work off of. Would there be, so let's say one of the businesses would need to, would need to do something that goes against the standard. Is this, in this case, can they pull a CUP or it's not, it's not allowed? Okay. So that's why it's the standard. So no, okay. That's the clarification I was looking for. I don't have additional questions. I think my colleagues did ask really great questions. But Commissioner Eskamia?
Chair, I'm sorry. Chair, I just wanted to add that what we've also noticed is that there are businesses in this area that do not have a business license, even though they have permits from other regulatory agencies. And so that is part of our tracking, right, to be able to follow up with our colleagues in business license, right, to just, yeah. And that's something that has surfaced through the code enforcement activity conducted over the past couple of years, where there are a number of businesses who have been there who are doing a lot of things, but they don't have a business license or an updated business license. That's all. Commissioner Eskamia?
Well, thank you, Chair. All right. So mostly, I guess, going to be digging into ordinance documents. So starting off on page 31 of 49 of the ordinance. Let's see. Oh, no, might have messed up on that one. See. 31, sorry. So I guess number one, just, you know, want to thank staff. I know that there do appear to be changes to the ordinance from the first listening round with additional clarification on specific specialized use. I really, really appreciate that. Just kind of pointing out one thing on item 23. So when we talked about automotive restoration services, just that one last line, as far as like must not be altered from manufacturer's original specifications, might be a little bit too tight or a little too limiting. So just for example, you put on rims that are not specified, you know, to the manufacturer's original, you know, specifications, it would technically not qualify. Right? So if there's any kind of work that slightly alters the body of a store car or any other kind of specialized vehicle, I think that that very last line might be a little bit too tight. I understand kind of the concept of not including kit cars as being new manufacturing, but again, a little bit of flexibility potentially there with that restoration qualifications. But I do appreciate that it was included in there. So that was just one thing to point out. And I guess number two was thank you for including it. And I guess just for those of you in the audience, I think that if you do look at the details of what is allowed and not allowed, there have been adjustments that staff have listened to and have included and have made modifications for. So I do think that through this process of having a conversation, we are getting to a better result through that. And I do appreciate the work that's, you know, I can already see right here. Number three, I'm going to go to page 27 of the ordinance. So I guess similar to my colleagues, I'm just a little, um, less inclined for the limitations on Sundays. I think it might just be more of a decibel reading sort of thing, right? So I don't know. Those of you that, you know, really, if we, we go back in a, kind of to our zoning history, we don't operate things on Sundays because of religious practices. And I don't necessarily know that, uh, that's something that we uh, need to continue. A lot of businesses do operate on weekends because that's the only time people can go when they're not working their, their regular hours. So I, I think that that's something that I would take into consideration. Uh, I do think limited hours, um, a more, let's say more restrictive decibel readings. Uh, and you know, limitations on certain types of activities such as deliveries and anything involving large trucks totally makes sense, but full operations I think is a little bit harder to support. Let's see. Uh, question number four, appreciate the comments that came in from Mr. Adams. So was wondering if if we had any sort of specific staff, uh, response to the sections around clarifying the transfer process. And I know maybe it's not being codified, but if any, it seems like a lot of the information that was there is kind of being explained by staff is, yes, it, it is part of the process, but I don't know if by reference, we include any, you know, anything that that kind of points to. And I think he's, his comments were, uh, you know, submitted in, uh, the general public comments, but I, I do, like, from what I heard from staff, it seemed like a lot of what Mr. Adams pointed out is part of the process, but might not be included directly within the transit zoning code reference, because it's more about how we handle these transfers of, um, title and transfers of businesses as a whole. So I don't know if we just have to kind of point to what our procedures are to those areas that were pointed out. That was four. Item five, I think this is on page 23, little subsection D. Yeah, same thing, I guess, on, uh, the limited decimals. So I think right now, as everyone hears me, um, I'm speaking at about 65 to 70 at this point, right? So that decimal reading, I think, does need to be reasonably defensible, right? So if we go out there right now, we just listen to the hum of the 5 freeway, we're, we're probably going to get above 70, just ambient street level. Again, I don't know if that, that is the case, but that's where I'm worried as to whether or not that's a reasonable decimal, uh, to, to start off at at 60.
So I just want to share that we're not making any changes to that proposed noise standard that's been established in the transit zoning code since 2010. So the origin, uh, the previous, um, proposed set of regulations did attempt to make changes relating to the noise standards. After having reviewed the existing environmental impact report and the noise standard that has been established, our recommendation is not to make any changes in that regard.
Okay. So we just already are starting off with
We're, we're basically leaving that intact as is.
Okay.
So we're not proposing changes to the noise standards that's currently established in the transit zoning code.
Okay, good to understand. So, you know, if we have an argument about it being too low, that's an argument for 2010. There was an argument at 2010 then. Okay. All right. Um, I'm not sure if we're including any sort of mitigation measures for any of these facilities, um, at least to kind of make it more explicit as to what we're, we're trying to avoid. So I know that um, as we kind of talk about the various definitions of what a noxious, noxious use is, uh, I don't know that we're including any kind of language to, um, specify the types of, you know, site improvements that we'd want to see in order to kind of remove people from specific types of categories. Really, the question becomes, you know, are there particular types of equipment that need to be installed on site? Are there certain standards or regulations when it comes to the storage of hazardous materials, again, on a escalating scale depending upon the danger of the materials i- is to the type of equipment, to what is or isn't allowed. Um, I think those are just the types of specifications and specifics we'd want to see by the time we, we get in front of city council. Again, just because I know that from at least the glance kind of overview of the various facilities, uh, it seems that, you know, hazardous material can range anything between storing used oil from an oil change up into, um, hexavalent chromite, right? So like a chrome plating facility, which to me, the chrome plating facility is a much larger concern with a substantial, substantial amount of research indicating that uh, exposure to that chemical will cause long-term cancer implications for the surrounding community. And that's slightly different than, you know, um, uh, mechanical oil system. So I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, how specific we need to be on what types of mitigations need to happen for what types of environmental contaminants.
Yeah, Commissioner, thank you. Um, points well taken, and we're taking notes on these, but just as a contextualization of the noxious uses definition, it does touch on the primary business operations, including the sort of handling, emission, storage, et cetera. So staff was equally concerned about a proportionality as well as you're alluding to, like, if a business has a minute amount of sort of hazardous waste that's incidental to its overall nature of operations and the facility is a very large facility. You know, you take into account all these factors when you're determining what is, or determining what is a primary activity or primary function of the business. Like is the primary function of the business, for example, to incinerate certain items and emit that into the atmosphere? Or is like sort of the hazardous waste or hazardous storage an incidental function to their business? And to coincide with that, there is a definition of what is primary versus ancillary. So that was the sort of like first step at making sure that it's not a net that captures the, as we say, the dolphins with the tuna. It's meant to be a little bit more discriminate in that attempt, uh, but your points are taken and noted.
Thank you. Um, and then I guess just on page 36, so looking again into that noxious use definition. Just a minor observation, uh, though this is just the way that I read it. It seems as though that there, it's kind of just one clause within section A that seems to also kind of apply to section C and vice versa. So to me, it did appear that that subsection A on emitting, generating, discharging, uh, particular materials or exhausting was really about any sort of emission out into, um, either during the, the act of, um, oh my gosh, manufacturing or processing that that was actually being emitted out from the facility. Uh, but it also includes ore handling, comma, storing, emitting. Uh, so I'm not sure if that handling, storing belongs there, or if that really should just be included or already included in item C below where it's saying storing, processing and disposing of listed hazardous materials. So it was, you know, just double inclusion. Uh, but again, the way that I read it, it did seem that the, you know, subsection A was more uh, speaking to the emission, the creation of emissions onsite in particular, and, you know, anything kind of escaping from, from the site. Uh, so just wanted, if there was, or needs to be clarification there to do that. Uh, and then the, the last one, I, I know that this just got done, but please, uh, in time for city council, just spell check the transit code, setting code industrial businesses Excel sheet so we can make all the corrections to the various spelling errors included.
Do any other commissioners have any questions or comments for staff?
If I may speak again, if, if I may.
Commissioner Benninger.
Thank you. Have we done any testing in the area? Their sampling, uh, ground mit- uh, mitigations to identify what some of these pollutants are?
Commissioner Benninger, if you're asking for testing from one business and what the outcome is, no, but we know that as our acting planning manager Ricardo Soto shared earlier, each business, industrial business may receive a permit to be able to emit. And what they're emitting are chemicals. Those chemicals are explained in the regulatory agency that is permitting them for that use for permits that are being issued to operate special equipment. So there is information about what's being allowed there. I did want to share, and part of what's in the staff report are studies that the state EnviroScreen 4.0, uh, mapping feature is able to present in terms of what kind of disproportionate pollution exposure is, are these neighborhoods subject to? And so what we see in the Logan and Lacey neighborhoods is that they rank over 90, in the 90th percentile for pollution burden. And so these are based on a number of variables. And in fact, our environmental justice areas here in the city have different rankings, but we have similar rankings in the southeast and other parts of town. And that's what makes the 33 neighborhoods in Santa Ana that fall within those census tracts that do give you data that they are pollution burden.
I appreciate you bringing it up because I just want to highlight that this is really, this is start of, um, of ordinances or changes in other neighborhoods that are, that are to come. Cause I'm sure Madison's is looking at Madison, um, neighborhood association and their green company is looking to see what happens here in order to push for changes in their neighborhood. Is that correct?
Yes. So we have, uh, community environmental justice advocacy groups that are wanting to see a similar solution in that part of town. But I did want to reference um, a study. This is something that we're also aware of, and also that was included with the public comments that you all received. But this has to do with a UCI research, you know, study, these are, uh, looking at risks for pediatric asthma cases for children living within 0.5 kilometers from industrial zone to their nearest schools, that they had 21% higher odds of asthma. And these are, um, students from Santa Ana Unified School District that were studied, that they used records from Santa Ana Unified Schools. So we're looking at 39,974, uh, Santa Ana students who were part of the qualifying lunch program, but they were able to, um, share information so that UCI and other researchers can be able to evaluate what are those factors and what are those risks for children who are living closer to industrial areas and they're within a short distance walking to their school.
Isn't this area also unique with the fact of the major highways that are going through these areas?
There are other neighborhoods in the South Santa Ana, the, um, west cluster as well that are close to, if not freeways, there are highly used corridors where there's a lot of trucks and traffic. So yeah, it's, it's difficult to segregate that from this area, but there is a concentration of more heavy industrial in this area. And you're factoring in the, the years, the, the legacy of some of the neighborhoods that have been here for some time. And, and that's the incompatible land use conflicts that we're addressing today through the proposed regulations.
I have to, I just would, um, I just feel right now concerned that we may be taking or, uh, labeling the businesses as noxious use with no testing, no, um, no data to back it up. That's, that's what my concern is. Uh, have we looked at those different permits that are issued by air, uh, air quality, EPA to identify who you, you may be concerned with?
Yes. So we receive information as part of our, our tracking process on permits that regulatory agencies, uh, notify city staff to be able to, um, let's say they are being given up, they're being considered to receive a permit to operate special equipment. We'll receive that. And sometimes they have a public comment period that we're able to post and the public's able to ask questions and get more information. The area that we are also involved in, Commissioner Benninger is researching some of the complaints that we're, that we're receiving directly with the staff from the regulatory agency to find out how does their process work? Because here we're trying to, you know, follow our process and just be able to, um, understand what are those effects and, um, how does that fall in line with our current ordinances? So it's, it's not, it's a task that involves a lot of learning and a lot of educating even from the staff at the regulatory agency in terms of understanding uh, what we need from them and why.
I do also want to build on, um, Margarita's latest information and response that the staff report does contain scientific data and evaluation about how we got here. That's also the basis of the findings that the city council made when it adopted the moratorium and extended it. Exhibit four to the staff report contains a robust scientific landscape of the data and the analysis on how these health determinants have inordinately affected this area. So, um, just for the commission's benefit, that data is included in the staff report packet for your review and consideration in your decision-making process.
Thank you. I'm done.
Commissioner Wu.
I'm ready to vote.
We're still working on the public hearing though. Commissioner Pham.
Just one clarifying, clarification. Just for future, uh, if we do encounter the same issue, um, you know, my, my understanding is, and it might be different from, from planning practices, but the most stringent and code takes precedence. So that's where my confusion is, is if federally a certain use is, is, uh, allowed because of federal or state, uh, threshold, but doesn't the city itself has its own ability to regulate, uh, or where does that jurisdiction end?
And maybe our legal counselor can help supplement my understanding of our authority as a local municipality. Our charge in this situation and our authority locally here is over use of land. Um, and regulating the time, place and manner, how, of how that, that piece of property is used. And that falls under the police power of zoning authority. So when we talk about issues outside of the city's, um, authority, including air quality, emissions control, uh, the ability to handle, uh, hazardous material, store hazardous material, the processes by which those, uh, chemicals are used. It's outside of the city's authority. However, where the intersections of those regulations creates impacts that have negative impact on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the course of that, the city can regulate the land and use of the property as well as the time and place of the manner by which, um, those uses can occur. So to give you a very example, the cornerstone of zoning and zoning regulations is to look at the separation of use to prevent conflict. Any one-on-one class of a land use attorney or a land use urban planner looks at is at the separation, the most sensitive land use, which is residential. And the highest, uh, impact land use, which is industrial. Those two land uses should really ideally never be adjacent to each other. In this case, not only do we have them to be in proximity of each other, we have them adjacent to each other in a lot of cases. Hence the source of the conflict that the city has in terms of reconciling the impact of industrial property with the use and enjoyment of a residential property. Therefore, a finding, as part of the finding that the, um, city council through the moratorium is that there are, there exists irreconcilable land use conflict that just cannot be resolved. There are characteristics of industrial use that cannot be reconciled with adjacent, when it's adjacent to a sensitive land use such as residential. Hence, some of the proposed regulations that are being proposed, the goal is to mitigate as mu- as much as possible, as much as feasible. So that they allow for the co, potential coexistence of these uses in a way that reduce the impact, not eliminate, it won't eliminate, but hopefully reduce the impact to where it's manageable and it's tolerable by those that are in the, in those communities.
He raised the issue that, um, on the six o'clock news, when, when something does happen, that long answer is not going to sit well with the public because they can hold you accountable, right? Even though it's not within your authority. You did mitigate, you set the standard, you did all that, uh, you probably inspectors probably went out there and inspected them and all that. However, placing them there, someone else gave them the permit. Doesn't sound good, but I understand. And I, I'm sympathizing what you're having to, to answer that question.
And I think, you know, you, you point out something very, um, unique about our situation is that there are other agencies that we just don't regulate, but is that there are other agencies that we just don't regulate, but we are here, right? The impact is here with the city. If something happens that those agency happens to be involved in, we are still having to answer for that. So you're absolutely correct.
Since there's no more comments or questions from staff, before we go into the public hearing, I'll call for a recess, 15 minutes, just so that we can get it together. Oh, no? Okay. Ooh, okay. We're ready to talk. Okay, I see it.
Chair, if I could have one more question for staff.
Commissioner, it's coming in. You have an additional question?
Yeah, it's all right. Just remembered on the, any consideration on the pets, CEP for longer-term pet care. So I know just sometimes having that ability to leave your pet overnight is an extremely nice flexible thing. I know you don't want it to have too many, don't want to have too many kennel type situations, but you know, I, I do think that allowing for overnight with a conditional use permit rather than a permit might be worth looking at for everybody trying to go on holiday vacation and trying to find a nice little spot for their pets to be at for a bit. Just a consideration.
Thank you. We've noted that.
I'd just like to add, if I may, to go, go back to Commissioner Pham's request. You have federal standards, you have state standards. The state standards can be more stringent than federal and they will supersede. I don't know, this is really a question for staff, if we had standards more severe than federal or state, can we make those standards stand?
Commissioner Benninger, that does generally fall within the city's land use authority. I'll use a similar example. You know, the commission routinely entertains requests for liquor license conditional use permits. Liquor licenses are given out by the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control and they give someone the ability from the state, subject to their regulations, to sell alcohol if the local authority enables it at a specific location. So that's the nature of the work that this commission does, that the city of Santa Ana is allowed to undertake. An applicant is awarded, let's say, a type 41 beer and wine license for a restaurant, but they still have to come because in Santa Ana, that requires issuance of a conditional use permit from the local planning commission. So we do see that interface between agencies frequently, but ultimately the city of Santa Ana has the jurisdiction over land use control for these types of private businesses.
Thank you.
Okay, since a break was not well received, we will jump into the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Recording secretary, have you received any written communication or is there a member of the public?
Sorry, we still have.
Oh, okay. No, I, yeah, he's still on, yeah. Recording secretary, have you received any written communication or is there a member of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Madam Chair, since public was about to take public's testimony, which is a very critical part of this process, I would just ask if we could at least take a five minutes' break for bathroom breaks. It seems like, you know, that'd be warranted and it's a quick break, so that way we don't have anyone leaving the dais.
I, I would agree. We can do a five-minute break and return at eight, eight o'clock. If we can all take our seats, we can resume the meeting. If we can all, if we can all take our seats, we can resume the meeting and start the public comment whenever y'all are ready. Thank you. Hi, thank you so much. We're going to return to the meeting. Recording secretary, if we can begin the recording once again. The public hearing is now open. Recording secretary, have you received any written communication or is there a member of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Chair, we have received a total of 44 emails in the form of public comments for this item before the 3:30 PM deadline. Additionally, we received two comments after the 3:30 PM deadline that were not distributed to the commission, but they will be included in the official record. One comment was in favor of the project while the other was in opposition. If you're attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on this item, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into the recording secretary. If you're participating via Zoom and would like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon. Once you're called, please submit yourself and state your name for the record. If you're calling in and would like to comment on this item, please dial nine. Once you're called, please submit yourself by pressing six and state your name for the record. Chair, I have provided you with the public speaker cards and we also have speakers on Zoom.
Thank you. To get the public speaking going, I'll call out a list of names and I'll have you stand in the, in the aisle and that way you can approach the mic as, as the, the previous speaker leaves. So I call forward Mike Tardif, Nassar Kai, Kai Fad, Enrique Bedala and Peter Lomkin.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Mike Tardif, longtime business owner, property owner, resident in Santa Ana. I'd just like to note, I'd like to note that we were promised by staff that, that we would have significantly more than the 72-hour minimum to review the staff report. We got it 73 hours, so that's like one hour more. And then we got these extra pages here and a lot of more information here. So to me, that doesn't seem fair. So I formally objected this hearing proceeding today because the city failed to honor its commitment to provide significantly more than the minimum 70, 72-hour notice for public documents to be released. A lot of talk has been about noxious use. You'd refer to my phone here on that. A business which has, say a business is considered a noxious use. I don't, I don't see any accommodation in there. If, if that business terminated, they ended the noxious use. Could they, in that case, be not considered noxious? There's nothing in there about that. And also some information that we didn't have before, never heard of a sliding scale that staff mentioned regarding the noxious use. Are you a number 10 noxious use or are you a number one? That needs clarification. Regarding amortization, that is simply a mandated timeline for a business removal. There is no equitable return or recoupment. It's a deadline, plain and simple. At the planning session or the study session, the commissioner asked, at this point, we have a moratorium in place. Everything is on pause, no occupancy permits, no equipment installations, everything is pretty much halted in the overlay zones? Question mark. Staff replied, the moratorium is on the establishment. Intensification or enlargement of industrial businesses, routine permits like replacing damaged equipment are not affected. That is not true. One business owner had to hire an attorney and spend $12,000 to secure, to secure a permit for equipment installation. Another was denied a certificate of occupancy just to add their son's name to the business. Your information packets, 250 pages plus this additional information was not a main, was not made available by staff within the timeframe they promised. The highly complicated draft regulations were only made available to public five weeks ago and we haven't had really that much discussion with the city or the community. I respectfully request that the commission delay consideration of his proposed ordinance for 90 days at least and for city staff to sponsor and conduct transparent and meaningful discussions. Thank you.
Nassar Kai Fad, Enrique Bedala and Peter Lomkin.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Enrique Bedoya. I work for Macro Z Technology Company. We're fun, we were founded locally in 1989. We're located in the Logan neighborhood since 2002. We are a small business construction company building for federal and public works projects. I want to express my and our company's opposition to the proposed changes to the transit zone, zoning. For over two decades, we have invested in this community, fostering relationships with local businesses, residents and charities. For example, this last Thanksgiving, we gave over 600 pounds food to the LC Food Bank. This Christmas, we donated toys and necessities to the homeless for Project Hope Alliance, which I've known you guys have spoken about. Our commitment to Santa Ana extends beyond business. We actively support local initiatives and strive to contribute to the well-being of our neighbors. Through these efforts, we have built strong partnerships and a deeply rooted connection to the Logan neighborhood, which is now under threat due to the city's proposed zoning changes. Our company is made up of offices in a small storage jar, yet we operate responsibly adhering to other environmental and safety regulations. And we do not create pollution or hazardous conditions, but this attempt to eliminate industrial zoning without considering the diversity of businesses affected is both misguided and unfair. Businesses like ours have long coexisted with the community and provided valuable services, yet we're now facing that prospect of being pushed out of our longstanding location through an unjust amortization process that lacks guardrails and limitations. The proposed regulations will make it impossible for us to continue our operations despite our contributions to the community. This amortization process is an unjust taking of property and livelihood. These changes are unjustified overreach and threaten to erase a vital sector of Santa These changes are unjustified overreach and threaten to erase a vital sector of Santa Ana's economy in favor of high-density residential development, despite the lack of adequate infrastructure and parking in our neighborhood. This shift is not only detrimental um, to our existing residents, but also destabilizes the very neighborhood that claims to improve. Please help me understand how high-density residential development makes sense in my neighborhood. It's composed of small businesses and single-family homes. At this point, it appears like a nefarious scheme to allow large developers to whitewash and gentrify Santa Ana. The city's push to remove industrial zoning into the guise of environmental justice lacks evidence and harms longstanding businesses. If justice is the true intent, the city should focus on equitable policies that support both small businesses and residential stakeholders, rather than facilitating a land grab for high-density developers. The staff's listing of service calls that include domestic violence and health emergencies seems kind of in bad faith. How does that relate to businesses? How do these numbers and stats relate to industrial uses? Thank you.
Thank you. Nasser and Peter?
Good evening. I'm Peter Lomkin. Currently president of HPL Mechanical in Logan Neighborhood. We've been there since nineteen seventy-six. Uh, I like to consider ourselves as having great relationships uh, with all of our neighbors, um, actually somewhat close friends as well. I do have some, I'm, I'm in opposition to this uh, for numerous reasons. First of all, it's like this just seems like an avalanche of information that's come out. So how could it possibly be understood by the public? I realize that there are parts of the public that doesn't care. They just want to blow it through. All right? But at the same time, it's not fair to the businesses to be able to have to manage their businesses and, and the same time figure out how they're gonna sell their properties for so much less value because all of a sudden they've been devalued. It's just not fair. So, next point. Uh, there's been nineteen meetings. I saw on a thing, there's nineteen meetings. Where was the notices? I never saw, uh, there's been two meetings as far as I'm concerned. One was last Wednesday night, which I found out was a residential meeting sponsored by the city to have the residents come together. All right? Not all, I don't know how many business owners here even got that notice, but it didn't say residences only on it. It just said, come on out, we're gonna explain this. I don't understand how they could just have the one meeting. And I asked at that, at that meeting, I asked, well, are they gonna have one for the business? They said, um, no. So I'm thinking, uh, a couple of the, uh, people here have mentioned about um, the fairness to, to having group community meetings. Well, I think it's a ruse. It's not been done. They have met with a couple guys who've gone into the office or something, but that's not considered a business meeting. That's not considered property owners. I rep, I represent a family that's owned a business like several others here for generations who came to this country from communists and other places, who are actually slaves of the Germans. They came here and made a better life for themselves. And now to have a government come in and say, well, you know, you've got so much time to get out. And do you think this nonconforming is gonna last? I know at the meeting, the person who was running the meeting said he has two hundred photographs. When that question came up, how are you gonna enforce this? We got two hundred photographs. You know what that means? That means on day one, code enforcement's coming out. And they're gonna start writing, or start attacking. It's just unfair. So I, 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 I hope and pray you guys would oppose this. Thank you.
Call forward Bob Adams, Harry Harvey Beigel, Kevin Trantor, and David Roche.
Hello, commissioners, Min, and staff. Uh, to all commissioners, wanted to congratulate you on some really great questions. Very helpful. My name is Bob Adams, owner-operator of Adams Iron Company on eight eleven North Point Centia Street, Santa Ana, since nineteen seventy-eight. I want to thank Min, Ali, Margarita, and Ricardo on the progress we together have made to date. However, I believe we have more work to do. And I have tremendous respect for all of you. Today, through my land lease council, I submitted a letter to the administrative record outlining concerns and deficiencies in the current draft. In addition, I submitted an, I, I submitted recommendations to the draft in a letter to the administrative record on February tenth with, with some additional recommendations. The draft first released was January fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. It is not ready for a vote to recommend to council. It absolutely is not. I respectfully request a continuance in this process so we may conduct additional meetings with planning and add all. In addition, meetings planning to add needed clarity to the amended draft. Also, as a solution, I submit to you a simple remedy. Keep M1 intact with some changes to M1 operating standards. This will make ninety percent of the business owners happy and avert legal actions. Rid the city of M2 noxious use. This will make all homeowners happy. The commissioners have questions that desire, that deserve answers. Answers that can vary a lot depending on what side you're on, asking those questions. Adams Iron supports the city's border goals for thoughtful land use planning. The current proposal lacks critical safeguards, clarity, and stakeholder input necessary to ensure a fair and balanced outcome. With proper collaboration, I believe workable solutions can be developed that uphold the city's objectives while preserving the operational integrity of longstanding industrial businesses. To that end, I urge the commissioners to either direct staff to make necessary revisions to, and to continue the hearing to allow additional time for meaningful engagement and refinement of the proposed amendments. And I would just ask a personal request if we could add the word legal before nonconforming, because that would make the, the phrase legal, nonconforming uh, more understandable. And I'll leave you with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Appreciate you letting us come up to the microphone for a limited time. The document that was passed out tonight, you cannot rely on. There are multiple mistakes, including mine. For example, they list me as having an AQMD permit, which I do. And my address is correct on that AQMD permit, but that permit is for field operations, not anything at my address. And there's other things like that, too. It shows I don't have a COO, but I do. Anyway, on to my, my main point. I have, uh, grave concerns about the noxious addition. We've been at ten twenty-five North Santiago since nineteen eighty-nine. And for those thirty-six years, when we got there, there was an in-ground fuel tank existing that we used. And since that time, we've always had fuel. Now we have a permitted legal above-ground storage tank for diesel fuel that we use daily. We also store bulk clean new oil to go out in our distribution trucks during the day. When those trucks come back in, they have what's called a, um, evacuation tank onboard, and then they transport with a, with a pump that gets pumped into a recycle oil, you know, recycled oil container that gets picked up. That's the only thing we do on site that might be considered, what, what do you wanna call it? Noxious or something? Anyway, so we got that. And then the hours of operation, we're in an M2 zone right now, and we do back up to approximately four to five residents behind us at the, at the Logan neighborhood. Thirty-six years, never a noise complaint, never a complaint from the, from that area. But we do operate, the trucks do leave the yard between five and five-thirty each morning. But they're backed into the yard and the engines are closest to Santiago Street. And then Saturday is a regular workday. At ten o'clock on Saturday, I, I mean, what, what kind of business operates on Saturday that's, that's a construction company like we are at ten o'clock? It's just not right. The trucks still leave the yard at five-thirty to six every Saturday. I think that's all that is, except to say that if you're gonna, if you're restricting our businesses, if you're not taking our property, which nobody accused you of, or I certainly didn't, but if you take away the use of the, of the property, what's the difference between you taking the property? And that's why this inverse condemnation needs to be really looked at. Because if you take my business, for example, that's not causing complaints, but yet you're gonna limit what I can and can't do there, it's not helping me. There's certainly a concern about business, I mean, about the property valuation, but that is secondary to me. I just wanna be able to continue to operate the business. I'm just turning it over to the next generation. And I've, I've been there thirty-six years and my son is just taking it over now and gonna continue. Then upon my demise, my two boys will own the property and what they do with it, what the value, but then that's what it'll be. So my primary concern is not the value of the property. It's the allowed to continue. Thank you.
Can you please state your name for the record? Can you please state your name?
Sure. My name is Harvey Beigle, B-E-I-G-L-E. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you, commissioners. My name is Kevin Trantor with Austin Hardwoods at six-ten North Santiago Street. Uh, for the record, I am in opposition of the ordinance. The business owners have spoken on many issues, from the longevity of their businesses to amortization, to the bad actors, and much more. One of the concerns voiced at the study session among the commissioners was the economic impact on the city if businesses are eliminated. I would like to share the impact just from our business alone, Austin Hardwoods and Hardware. We started as a two-man operation in nineteen eighty-one and have been in Santa Ana since. We've grown to forty-four employees, twenty of whom reside in Santa Ana, almost half of the company. The gross wages for the twenty alone for the last five years is over four million dollars. A few of them have even been fortunate enough to have purchased a home in Santa Ana. We have two properties in the transit zone, one retail store on Santiago and a warehouse for our inventory on Lincoln. Our main building sits on three and a half acres and has a valuation in two thousand and twenty-two of seventeen and a half million dollars. That location is paid in full. Our other building is valued at three point three million with a loan balance of six hundred thousand to be paid in the next three years. The revenue over the last five years is over a hundred and twelve million dollars, paid state taxes of eight million dollars, city taxes of one and a half million dollars. Multiply those numbers by a hundred businesses in our area, and that equates to a huge economic impact on the city of Santa Ana. Many of the customers that we cater to either live in Santa Ana or have a business in Santa Ana as well. Factor that in. Another issue that I would like to address are the hours and holidays of operation. Our store hours as a retail business are six AM to five PM Monday through Friday, and six AM to two-thirty on Saturday. It is critical for the small contractors that we service to pick up the materials early to get to the job sites. They pose no negative impact on the local neighborhoods. We are closed on the five major holidays. Having to close on all federal holidays will have a negative impact on a lot of their customers as they operate twenty-four seven. The last concerning issue is one that we all seem to agree upon, the bad actors. They have created significant health hazards and safety issues from their, their operations and the crowd that they attract not only to the residents, but a lot of our employees and our customers coming into the store as well. Uh, one of the other things I would like to bring up, just like Harvey did, is this list is outdated and inaccurate. It lists our business on here three different locations when we only have two. One of the locations, it says that we have an AQMD permit for a spray booth. There's no spray booth on our property. Uh, another one of the listed discrepancies on here is you have Arida's Cabinets, which was one of our customers. They closed their business ten years ago. They're still listed on here. So this needs to be updated. Thank you very much for your consideration. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. I call forward David Roche, Don Crawford, and Rachel Krauslee.
Hello, I'm Dave Roche with Roche Excavating. And I've got a lot of questions here. How is eight feet or taller on noxious use? And why haven't you done any air quality management testing at all and just relied on studies? Interesting. So you, you've talked a lot about the existing neighborhoods. Say Santa Fe or Logan, aren't they single-family homes with front and back yards? So have you considered the density of three and four-story condos with no backyards? What about setbacks there? What about making the streets wider? Because it's already complete cars from stoplight to stoplight, and you wanna add more people? Why not add a park? Why not create some setbacks for houses? Why not widen the streets? Instead of putting more people in place, they're gonna cause more pollution and more problems. And what about the homeless? And the drug use and the drug dealers and fourth and grand and everything else? And what about the one-sided meetings for just residences? No one's called a business meeting? Not that I've heard of. So for two hours, I listened to everybody not answer questions and talk about meetings with residences, but they haven't called one for the business. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Crawford, Rachel, oh, okay, Rachel Krauslee, Barney Richard, and Jason, Jason Ru?
Hi, I'm Rachel Krauslee, and I live in the transit zoning code. I support the proposed amendments to the transit zoning code with one change, that storage facilities should not be allowed in the zone because it is incompatible land use within transit-oriented development. It's frustrating and disheartening that I am forced to avoid certain streets in a, in a neighborhood that I am so proud to be a part of due to certain businesses' irresponsibility and complete apathy to manage their clientele and properties. It's disgusting and at times downright unsafe that a dump is allowed to operate next to a school and our developing youth. And just to circle back to a comment that was stated earlier, I am disturbed and disappointed with the fact some individuals are more concerned with the businesses and very little concern is shown for the actual residents who live in this, in these neighborhoods day in and day out. Thank you.
Hello there. My name's Barney Richard. I'm a resident of the lofts across the street from the, uh, from the train station. And, you know, I had a lot to say tonight, but I'm, I'm gonna keep it to one topic, which I think is the biggest problem for the most people. And that is the Madison Ware disposal. They are in constant violation of the AQMD standards. On any given day, unless it's foggy with no wind, dust is escaping that facility, and that's an AMQ, AQMD violation. I've talked to the director, I've called in, many of us have called in at the, to the AQMD, and they've come down and agreed with us. If dust leaves that property, it's a violation. How do companies like that survive? I'll tell you what they do. They put up a misting system around the entire property and where the trucks are being unloaded, where they're being reloaded again. But unfortunately, Ware or Madison, whatever you wanna call them, has chosen not to do that. They've been there for twenty years. They've had ample time. So they've lost that chance now, in my opinion. Whether this passes or does not pass, their opportunity, I think, is over. Also, what other businesses are allowed to queue all of their customers on the public street? Nobody gets in line at the Madison disposal and, 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 and they're in a line inside the property. No, there is only a line outside the property. That needs to end. The only company I know that can do that is In-N-Out Burger, and I know other cities are working to fix that. So those two things alone, they should be getting written up. And, and I gotta ask, and I don't know this, I was told this, but I believe they operate on city land. This isn't, I don't think they own that property. I think they lease it from you guys. I could be wrong. But when that lease is up, they very well, it better not be renewed, because it's a huge health hazard. Every time I've gone to speak, and I guess I better hurry up, every time I've said something about this, because really, I'm just complaining about dust in my house. I've only lived there seven years. But every time I bring it up, somebody chirps from the background, yeah, but my kid's got asthma and, and, and grandma died of cancer and, and, and and Grandma died of cancer and these long term residents bring up these health problems. And then I see that we're in the 90 percentile, you know, of issues or whatever that was indicating, which is clearly extremely bad. And that dust is going everywhere. And if you're trying to create a transportation hub that services the whole community, half the community can't even access the train station because they can't walk past there. The schoolchildren can't get through.
Thank you so much Barney, your time is up.
And they cannot.
So much for your comment. I call up Jason Wu, Mark McCandless and Daniel Gosnell.
Good evening, Chair Oliva and the rest of the Planning Commission. My name is Jason Rush. I'm here to represent JBW Enterprises. We have one property in the Lacey neighborhood. One aspect of this is that when you get to the amortization process, you end up getting a very asymmetric situation. You end up, the city will then end up having the power to dictate terms and conditions on how a business will operate. As I said two weeks ago, if you're an integrated business with another business, you can't take one aspect of it without necessarily impacting another. So these are things you have to be concerned about, about what awesome power you may take, not necessarily you guys specifically, but ultimately if you recommend this to the city council, that what may seem innocuous from a legal point of view certainly isn't. So these are things that have to be considered. But just one thing I've also started to think about is this item doesn't exist in its own little vacuum. You have, I understand there's two neighborhoods here that have certain impacts. But there's also 58 other neighborhoods that have the same level of impact. You can start Artesia Pilar, anything down Grand, anything up Warner, some parts of Edinger, up Fairview. Ultimately, you're going to have to take what this is, if you're consistent and take it to them too. I mean, you can't come after those of us in only two neighborhoods and let the other 58 go. I mean, that's not going to work. It would also be, I think it'd be better off for everybody if they understood, okay, so we're ultimately going to end up having more of this high density housing, both in Logan and Lacey. The neighborhood deserves to know exactly what that is. Other neighborhoods in the city deserve to know what that ultimately will be. Once you get rid of the certain noxious uses, ultimately it's not going to go to another business. It's going to go to some sort of housing development. You know, where I am, you know, I've been there for, well, 23 years now. Now I got 157 neighbors across the street. So now I'm, so now we have this conflict that I didn't exactly ask for, but now there it is. And, you know, there's a lot of other things that have to be resolved along those lines. Thank you.
Mark McCandless? Daniel Gosnell?
Can you go first? Great. Yeah. So this has been a long meeting. So my question to men and margaritas, are we going out to dinner after this? So anyways, I just want to kind of recap because I think everybody always touches base on the main issues. And this is more in regards to, you know, a lot of industrial uses and business owners that have also been in this area a long time. So I've taken over a family business. I learned the trade, started, this is my 37th year as a tile setter. I run McCandless Tile, started by my grandfather in 1924 in Old Town Orange. Moved to Santa Ana in the 40s. We moved out of Orange and Santa Ana came and approached businesses like ours, my grandfather at the time, and got them into Santa Ana, you know, because Santa Ana wanted businesses. They wanted to improve the areas. So our original building was a metal Quonset hut with a half acre dirt yard, which we stored sand and cement in and we worked out of it. In 85, Santa Ana contacted my dad. He wanted to improve the area more, so we built two 15,000 foot concrete tilt ups. You know, and it's been a very good area to work in and we get along great with the neighborhoods. Our buildings are maintained, they're painted every year and there's honestly no noxious uses are. I'd say we're qualifying the good industrial neighbors type of stuff. I'm also concerned with, you know, passing the business and property over. This is my, whoop, she sat down, my daughter. She will be fourth generation. Less than 4% of businesses pass on to the fourth generation. I'm pretty impressed with that and I want to see, I want to have the opportunity to go to the fourth generation. In the February 10th meeting, you guys made some comments about, oh my gosh, I just lost total brain. Oh, just about, you know, the impact of businesses like us to the community. Since 1924, we've employed over 500 people. And if you take the one production job supports nine service jobs, that's a lot of, that's a lot of jobs we support. I also support the residences in this area. I'm going to bring up the Santa Ana Lofts. They're directly across the street from me on Point Setia. They do a good job. They maintain their places. We maintain our places. My concerns mimic theirs and it's not really addressed a lot, but I also, you know, have issues with Ware disposal. I have issues with Bruce Metals. They, you know, steal catalytic converters out of my trucks. They cut my anti-siphon valves off and they take it to Bruce Metals. I also have issues with what used to be in the 80s, the rundown, burned down residential areas in my back alley. You know, so it goes both ways. I'm hoping the city takes care of the industrial, the good industrial players, works with the good residential players and we communicate as, you know, as a community. Anyways, time's up.
Guess I can start. My name is Daniel Gosnell. I'm a resident at the, within the Transit Zone Code area. I support the proposal and the amendment and I think it's an important step forward for creating a livable environment, community. I think a lot of the businesses in the area don't necessarily know how much is going on, especially during the day or after hours. And I really wish that you guys would actually work with us towards getting some of these bad actors towards the way because I don't see a lot of you coming up with suggestions. So just want to say that. Thanks, everybody.
I call forward Joe Andrade, Jade Chirini, Michael Peyton and David Zech.
Hello, Commissioner. My name's Joe Androtti. I'm from the Logan neighborhood, as most of you know. Sammy from Arrow and my mom would be kind of upset still. They fought this fight for a long time. And we're finally getting somewhere. And we're just asking you guys to help us out here. We're tired of all the smoke coming in, all the dust coming in, even the dust from Ware comes over here. We still have Ware disposal in front of my house, which has nothing but junk. And the problem with that is that a lot of those places that construction workers and all that, they have not only one business in there, but they have five to six businesses in there. No license or whatever. But they all work, okay? We got screwed from, sorry, we got messed up from the beginning when the freeway came through. We lost houses. Santa Ana Boulevard came through with the train station. We lost houses, okay? Our illustrious Julio decided to change the zoning and messed us up there where, that's where it all started and let all the commercials in. Ware disposal, we had them in front of us. We kept bugging, we kept bugging, we kept bugging. We finally got them to move to Fullerton, but they still own the place. They still have trash. They still have all the stuff, rats, mice, everything running around. What do we do? That's why this is all happening. Our families are tired of it. Everybody here starts talking about, I've lived here since 1926, maybe 1986. You know, I'm 70 years old. I was born and raised where I live. I'm still there, only because my mother, father, my grandparents were born and raised there. I have my son next to me. I have sisters, brothers, sisters, no brothers down the street. And we're just tired. We've lost four family members from cancers and all this stuff. We have a lot of them with asthma and kids that aren't all there because of all the stuff that's been in the air there. And I wish I could invite you all to go sit with me, barbecue when the crematorium starts smoking and enjoy the bodies coming down in there. It's not good. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Jade Chirini. I grew up on Washington Avenue and I still live in the city today. I stand before you today to express my concerns regarding the proposed zoning changes and ask how we can realistically resolve a complex zoning issues. In just a few weeks, when these challenges have been evolving since the late 1800s, there's been little meaningful engagement with the whole community throughout this process. We had one community meeting where the residents and the businesses came together, one. And tonight, we can see through the comments alone that both the residents and the businesses agree on a lot of things. I urge the Planning Commission to pause this process and engage in meaningful discussions with all community members together. Rushing these changes without properly addressing the long term concerns will only create greater instability in our community. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Mike Paxton. I'm a resident of the Santiago Street Lofts. I've lived in San Ana almost 20 years now and I've worked down here for about 25. I noticed tonight that the staff has come up with a lot of information that really illuminated or brought into detail more stuff than we thought in the very first meetings. It seemed like there were just so many different polluters that were just going to try and get rid of everybody, but they've really reduced that down to a smaller number. And listening to everybody who spoke tonight, Mr. Adams, Mr. McCandless and, you know, of course Barney over there, it does show that we're all more on the same page than we're not. And I don't have an issue with refining this that would make some of these businesses feel more comfortable, especially the ones that are the non-polluters, as long as it doesn't derail the process and stop it completely. And it moves it along at a more expedited pace than we've seen before. And that's essentially all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Zek. I'm with Pacific Plumbing. He just stole all my thunder. That's kind of what I wanted to say is I think we're kind of pushing through this. There's a lot of revisions yet that need to be made. We want to be business owners, good neighbors to the residents that live there. I mean, heck, we spend a lot of time at work. We live there part of our life too. You know, we just aren't there to work and pollute, so to speak. One of the things that concerns me really about this is I've got a generational business. We've been in business here in Santa Ana since 1929. And the provisions don't allow me to make additions or improvements to my business that can carry it on. And you say you want me to take some of the things we do outside now and bring them inside of a building. Well, if this goes through, I am never going to be able to do that. So it's going to restrict my growth in a meaningful way that's going to go forward. And that's kind of where it all ends to me. So I hope you consider holding off and pushing this to the council for a vote. You know, there's a lot more to be talked about. Thank you.
I call forward Jackie Michael, Dan Dominoshey, Miran Tumaajan.
Good evening, Council. So my name is Jackie Michael. I live in the Lacey community. I just bought my property and you built two years ago in 2022. I do share a border with industrial properties. We have a brick wall between us, unfortunately. We do lie up against an industrial company. So my bedroom, my son's bedroom, the family's bedroom, they're basically right above the containers, the semi trucks and everything else that's going on in operation with construction. So I, saying that, I like to have the industrial owners really put theirself in our shoes. And if this was you living in this space, how would you feel? I understand there's a business and I understand there's money to be made, but I also need you to understand that this is real life and there's families and you wouldn't want this happening in your own family. So industrial businesses are operating without a business license. I did confirm that with the city in Santa Ana and they're actually not even listed on this. So there's like two to three on East Fourth Street. Please take a look at them. They're currently operating and it's been reported, but I'm not sure what's going on with the follow up on that. So that would greatly be appreciated. The noise level. So I know it's been like brought up so many times today, but operating at 5:30 in the morning when you're slamming containers and waking up a four year old and your family or even yourself when you need to go to work and make sure you make the right decisions is really uncalled for. In addition, I am a remote worker. I work 100% from home and I can't even get into my own corporate meetings without like the slamming, the vibrations and everything else that goes along with industrial heavy machinery operating. And actually the company or the industrial company that's operating without a permit uses a generator because they have no electricity apparently. So it's just chaos and for these really expensive homes that we just bought, these million dollar homes trying to bring up the revitalization of Santa Ana, it's very, very unfortunate and unfair. They are violating code violations. When we do call the Santa Ana PD, the non-emergency number, there's a lag time where they just don't show up because we're not a priority. They have other things to take care of. So know that the residents, the HOA, we're super frustrated, we're super exhausted. I myself am ready to like sell my house and just let the community go to hell because we're so tired of like dealing with this industrial like pushback all the time. Air quality. I can't tell you if you were an industrial homeowner, what it feels like to be barbecuing on your patio and have like dust clouds coming at you constantly or through your windows. I mean, again, it's not a quality of life. It's so unfair and I I hate that Santa Ana like built these amazing properties without taking, like cleaning house first, basically. If they were going to do this whole utilization of residential industrial, they should have made sure that it was going to be a residential community and not like put us in the situation where everyone's battling at this point. It's very unfortunate. It's very unfair and we're really frustrated about it. And I know I just ran out of time, but property values, they don't go up when you're in a residential or industrial area. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and city staff. My name is Daniel Joseph Dominowski. I live at 741 West 11th Street in Claremont, California. I'm here as a representative for a property owner, a business where we've been operating now for over 30 years. I'd like to go on the record and support the project goals and appreciate the efforts that the staff has taken to incorporate especially some of the comments from the study session from two weeks ago. Like to see us continue to move in the direction of using a scalpel and not a sledgehammer. So I think there's some progress there, although I don't like becoming a legal non-conforming use. I'm pleased that at least we're not going to be a noxious user based on the current draft ordinance. So I look forward to understanding these new operational requirements so that if it's necessary to make some modifications and comply with them, then we'll be able to do that. Thank you. um, so that if it's necessary to make some modifications and comply with them, then we'll be able to do that. Thank you.
Chair Oliva, fellow planning commissioners, my name is Miran Tuma John. I serve as the Government Relations Manager at NAOP SOCal, which is in the, uh, district, uh, in the transit zoning code, specific development number eighty-four zoning district. Uh, with over thirteen hundred members, NAOP SOCal is the leading nonprofit organization representing commercial real estate industry in Orange and Los Angeles counties. NAOP SOCal members are professionals in industrial office, retail, hospitality, mixed-use real estate and include developers, owners, investors, brokers, architects, engineers, general contractors, finance professionals and other service providers involved in the commercial real estate industry. Uh, NAOP SOCal opposes the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, uh, amendment application and the zoning map. NAOP SOCal's headquarters, uh, as I mentioned, are within the, uh, SC eighty-four urban neighborhood zone. Our office is currently surrounded by a well-proportioned balance of residential, industrial and commercial properties. Several NAOP SOCal members are long-term institutional stakeholders in the city of Santa Ana. These companies are closely engaged in providing substantial community benefits at no cost to taxpayers. Such benefits include upgrading streets, sidewalks and other community infrastructure, funding local schools and parks and boosting the city's property and sales tax revenues. As stewards of sustainable development, our members significantly contribute to the socioeconomic advancement of communities in Santa Ana and across Orange County by demonstrating their ongoing commitment to decarbonization and renewable energy by constructing LEED-certified buildings, installing solar panels on warehouses and using environmentally friendly building materials. Most importantly, our members involved in industrial real estate have tenants engaged in manufacturing, product distribution and fulfillment, warehousing and third-party logistics. Industrial tenants employ hundreds of Santa Ana residents whose commutes to work and home are relatively short and limit the amount of vehicle miles traveled and tailpipe emissions. While NAOP SOCal and its members are proponents of good neighbor policies which aim to balance the interests of the city, its residents and property owners, we encourage the Planning Commission to be mindful of its industrial stakeholders and refrain from removing existing industrial overlays M1 and M2 from the transit zoning code, uh, zoning district. We recommend that the Planning Commission be inclusive and allow the M1 and M2 overlays to coexist with the urban neighborhood and urban center zones in a new quote-unquote hybrid industrial zone, if you will. The removal of the two existing industrial overlays would suggest poor land use policy and create unnecessary problems between residents and industrial property owners where none exist today. NAOP SOCal looks forward to engaging with the city of Santa Ana Planning Division staff in our efforts to find common ground on this issue benefiting the city, its residents and industrial property owners, tenants and workers. Thank you for your attention.
I call forward Mark Law, John, John Ledias, Andy Schmidt and Jack Haley. Mark Law, John, John Ledias, Andy Schmidt and Jack Haley. Are you in attendance? Okay, we'll move forward. Brian M. Brian M., Rachel Friedman, Michael Friedman and Stephanie Wells.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Andy Schmidt. I'm the property owner at one oh three two Lincoln. I am opposed to the adoption of the TRC amendments for the following reason. The city has asked for more tools. I'm equating the term new tools with an increase in policing powers. I'm concerned that with an increase in power is a temptation to misuse that power. I would like to tell my personal story as how it relates to the current set of tools available to the city. My starting point for this discussion is the industrial business list that was passed out this evening. My business is listed as number twenty-six on the list and has been identified with violations. I would like to tell my personal story about how I got placed on this list. I purchased my property in July of twenty twenty-one. Prior to closing escrow, I approached the city with my intended use as storage. I was given very specific operating conditions. I was told that my intended usage would be allowed. In doing my due diligence, I was provided with copies of permits for existing improvements on the property. I became satisfied that the existing improvements were permitted. My elation of owning a an industrial property to run my business was very short-lived, however. After closing escrow, I approached the city for my business license. The city had issued me a partial or provisional license until I closed escrow. After completing escrow and the new owner of the property, I was told then by planning that a usage had never been established on this property and I was prohibited from occupying it. It was not until March of twenty twenty-two that the planning department rescinded the prohibition of my business and I was able to occupy the property. I next received a notice of violation for unpermitted work. The complaint focused on uh, the same improvements that I had been provided copies of permits. The complaint stated that final inspection had not been signed off by the city for the prior landowners. I would like to add that the certified letter that I received from the city no less arrived on my birthday. I can only hope that this was not intended. I next reached out to the city to apply for grant funding made availability for property owners with permit violations. I never heard back from the city regarding those inquiries. Another troubling incident occurred that sort of left me feeling uneasy was when a neighbor told me that he had noticed individuals with a ladder erected at my property gate. When he approached these individuals to see what was going on, it turned out to be someone from the city council and someone from the neighborhood. Um, while this is not illegal, it seemed very unnerving to me and did not foster much goodwill and highlights that the city almost seems willing to share its tools with members of the community.
Thank you, Andy. Your time's up. Thank you so much for your comment.
Hi, my name is Brian. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I'm one of the Santiago Street Loft owners. And I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and some of the citizens and lawful owners of the Work Live Lofts, collectively known as the Santiago Street Lofts. The city is proposing a measure that would dramatically limit the use of our live workspaces as developed by the city. So when Lennar came originally and developed it, they worked in partnership with the city to create a space where people could work and live in the same location. And in the current wording of, of the proposal, um, it is going to limit what we're able to do there and we already have DDRs that were set up in two thousand and seven when I purchased my property that stated what we could and couldn't do. Nothing that we currently are allowed to do is considered noxious or bad. However, technically, if somebody wanted to, um, make watches or create clothing and all of those different types of businesses currently exist in that community, that would still be considered an M1 business. So I don't understand how it was okay in two thousand and seven when you guys put that together. And I understand businesses that are creating a negative impact on a community, we should do something about that. But if there are businesses that aren't having a negative impact on the community, just not having the right wording and I saw that they added some wording into the proposal now, but still, what if we don't want to have a retail space? What if we only want to create stuff that we have somebody else sell for us? Um, then we would no longer be in compliance. So that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Friedman. Me and my father are property owners at one zero zero eight to one zero twelve Fuller Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I come before you not just as a property owner, but as someone who has invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into the city, working with our tenants to ensure compliance and our tenant, my add, grew up in the neighborhood, built a successful business and is employing, um, people in the area, maintaining our buildings, painting it, keeping it up, making, and we agree too that there should be no vacant homeless as that attracts the homeless and it's bad for the residents and our properties. We agree with that. We don't want the neighborhood to look bad and contributing to the well-being of the community. We have been responsible, engaged property owners, and yet under this moratorium, we are now being penalized alongside those who have neglected their responsibilities like the residents have said with the disposal companies. We all want a safer, more vibrant city, but rather than taking a bottle of poach that punishes all the property owners, we should be targeting the bad actors. The six-month amortization period further compounds a problem by forcing businesses out with enough, without enough time to transition. It devastates property values and it leaves us unable to sell or lease the buildings in any viable way. And if we can't operate, what happens next? The only logical outcome is residential redevelopment. So imagine your house is next to a huge residential development building which takes years of construction and brings noise level and like other residents have said dust and very increased traffic compared to the industrial use that is in place now. And I would just suggest to the city before moving forward with this, some sort of forum that we can engage with the residences and maybe work together to come up with a solution so we can all coexist and contribute to the community in a meaningful way. The city is facing real challenges, just like from across our building. There's a vacant building which has so many homeless and our tenant has called numerous times to try and get rid of it and they try and get rid of it for a few days, but then they come back and also graffiti on the wall which we want to fix and we are always on top of it, crime and economic stability. Property owners like myself should be a part of the solution, not collateral damage. I urge the council to reconsider the impact of this moratorium, extend the amortization period and work with responsible property owners to create policies that are both effective and fair. Thank you.
Michael Friedman, Stephanie Wells and Jack Haley.
Hi. I want to pick the right night because it seems like it's daddy and daughter night. There are quite a few of those here tonight, so I'm very proud to be here for that. Good evening. My name is Michael Friedman and I own, uh, two properties in the zone. And I've combined the building. So there's one great property of seventeen thousand square feet on almost an acre of land. I thought it was a terrific property when I purchased it twenty-five years ago. And I never thought, I knew I would have problems over the years because it's not easy being in business for yourself and being a property manager and you've got to do the leasing and you've got to pay the bills and you've got to look for the right tenant. There's so much that goes into it. There's never enough time in the day to do it all. Um, and I'm here before you tonight because my future and the future of so many hard-working property owners is at stake. I want to talk about the amortization clause in the simplest terms possible because that's the only way I understand them. Imagine you spent your entire life building up a business and in my terms, building up properties. I don't have many properties. I'm certainly no Donald Brenn with endless properties. I have, uh, twelve properties and sixteen tenants. And that's plenty for me. Sometimes, and I know many of you poured much of your savings into your properties. Some are, some of the properties are user-occupied by the owner and also runs the business out of them, out of the property too. I am not a user owner. Um, I'm an owner. Um, and I happen to think I'm a good owner and a good landlord. To many attractive tenants I have brought to the city and the area. And I work tirelessly to maintain the property. And then in just six months, the government tells you it's time to go. Not because you did anything wrong, not because you broke any laws, but simply because they decided they could take it away. And there may be some other powerful voices at play as well. This is what is examining here, an enclosure. I, uh, hope and I pray that you'll make a good decision on this.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you so much for your
Issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Staff. Uh, I did prepare something. My name is Stephanie. I'm a resident in the affected area. But before I share with what I presented, I just want to address some of the counter arguments we hear from the businesses. I'm hearing a lot of, um, it's their future. They can't pass it on to their next generation, but like you heard, they have more than one, um, property. These type of business owners usually have other vehicles to transfer wealth, so let's not be blind and you know, use that or have that live in your mind when you're not thinking about the health and the reality of this community, which is composed of more disadvantaged people. People who can't move and change where they live or don't even own their homes or renters here. They don't have a choice. Like some of these business owners do have a choice to move and continue their legacies and share their wealth through different vehicles. They have said it's not fair. It's not fair to the people who live here. Like I said, the people who live in Santa Ana don't have the same means as the business owners who don't live here, who are just making money off this area and using it as a dump ground. They've asked for pausing and delay, but from what I've heard in the presentations, this is something that has been discussed for many, many years. I say that we do not pause, that we do not delay if it's something that's been considered for as long as it has and already with all the research that has been completed. With that, I'll move into what I was going to share, which was the fact that if you can't tell yet, I support the amendments. I, with an exception of the storage units, I do not support storage units because that is also an industrial use. But what I want to share is as a resident, what it feels like to live amongst the industrial businesses. They have created unsafe conditions, environmental hazards, exasperated vandalism and crime that directly impact our quality of everyday life. Our streets often have traffic hazards, blocked access, litter with debris, sharp objects, hazardous materials. Beyond safety, our health is at stake. Research from UCI has shown that proximity to industrial zones is linked to asthma rates. Metal recyclers, waste dumps and even a crematorium are dangerously close to our homes, parks and schools, creating air pollution, noise pollution, long-term cardiovascular, neurological and respiratory health risks. I don't want any of these. I live here. I don't want to get stuck with that. Santa Ana deserves to be a city where residents can safely walk, jog, bike on the new paths, enjoy the neighborhoods where families and children can play outside without fear of the unsafe conditions. But right now, including me, none of us can do that. And no resident should have to worry about whether the air they breathe is safe. There are so many days I want to open up my windows and I can't because of the dirty air. So we're asking for the right to live in a clean, safe, healthy community and I urge you to prioritize the well-being of our health over outside business interests. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jack Hogan. Uh, I'm a commercial real estate broker. And, um, I specialize in, uh, leasing and selling industrial buildings, um, listing them for customers of ours. Um, and primarily, um, in M1 industrial zone uses, um, where, you know, they're looking for new tenants or new owners, new users, they're going to occupy the properties that are existing. Most of which are existing industrial buildings or contractor yards, um, that are used for clean uses for the most part. Um, one of the commissioners on the last meeting we had two weeks ago, um, said, why do we want to take a sledgehammer to, uh, solve a problem that might be otherwise resolved using a scalpel? And that really resonated with me, um, as I left that meeting. Most of the M1 industrial uses in other areas of San Ana are relatively clean. Um, you know, mostly we have warehousing uses, e-commerce uses, light manufacturing. Um, people that pretty much, you know, utilize the interior of the concrete tilt-up industrial buildings that they have. Um, in the subject area of the transit zoning code, there's roughly a million square feet of brick and mortar, um, industrial buildings. Um, it's a lot of space. I come to these meetings, um, frequently and, um, can't tell you how many times I've heard about this crematorium. And I know where the crematorium is. Uh, it's in a five thousand It's in a 5,000 square foot building on a 6,200 square foot lot. It's a small property. I'm not trying to say it's not a big problem. I'm not really in support of obnoxious uses, but I'm just saying that to take away an owner's right to lease his property to a light industrial use is wrong, I think. Because when you drive down the street and you see an industrial building, it's an industrial building. It's been an industrial building for many, many years. And to try to change the use of that industrial building to something else, which is basically residential is what they want in the area UN1, it doesn't make financial sense to buy that property and build a house on it for, to create something that's worth less than the amount of cost to build it. It doesn't make sense at all. And in fact, if you are going to try to, if you, sorry, I'm running out of time now, so losing my train of thought, but if you don't allow them to reuse it or to release it as a use that's suitable for the building that's already there, I think you're going to end up with a lot of blight and a lot of other like homeless type of problems that are going to happen as a result of vacancy, as a result of people not finding ways to reuse that property. You have to find adaptive reuse when you change zoning of a property in an entire area. And to do that in a 1 million square foot industrial area.
Thank you so much, Jack.
Just creates a lot of challenges for those that own properties there. Thank you.
Forward, Thomas Castro, Michael Lee, Michael Feeley and Kayden Burton.
Good evening, commissioners and city staff. My name is Michael Leahy. I'm a resident in the transit zoning area that is affected by this ordinance and I am in support of this ordinance. Myself, I've lived in, grew up here in Orange County. My wife grew up in Santa Ana and my two-year-old son has spent his entire life here in Santa Ana. We moved, we chose to move to Santa Ana and buy a home here in Santa Ana because we were very excited by the vibrant community and a lot of the small, great small businesses, community events, all sorts of things that happen in Santa Ana, especially in our neighborhood and in the surrounding neighborhood. Downtown is a great place to visit. We took our son to go visit Santa Claus, you know, at the community event that was there over Christmas. But what is a struggle for us to living in this area is this industrial area specifically that as far, you know, where I live at Fourth and Standard, having this M2 area near us with recycling business across the street that has debris blowing out of it anytime the wind kicks up, extremely unhygienic conditions around the business because it appears that they do not spend any time clearing any trash or landscaping or cleaning up after people that are there after hours. I, for example, would love to walk down Point Setia Street, the maybe less than half a mile to new businesses that have opened up there. And I frankly can't because at any time of day, there could be transients, there could be large trucks at these different dumps and other disposal places. And just extremely unhygienic streets that these businesses are allowing to fester without any regard for the residents in the area. And one thing that I did want to agree with one of the business owners was that they wanted more parks in their area. I would love to see more parks in our area, but I do believe that we would need to have this industrial overlay removed. And as a resident, someone again, I live Fourth and Standard, my area I see on the handout that was handed out earlier today is currently zoned as an M2 area. And I think that my community, a couple of other folks have spoken from my community is a perfect example of what can happen if this overlay is removed as instead filled with single-family homes, filled with townhomes, filled with parks. And I think is a much better usage of that area. And I hope that for my neighbors that have been here for 50, 70, 100 years, that they enjoy our presence there much more than they enjoy the presence of some of these industrial businesses. So again, I support this ordinance and I encourage and hope that you do too. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Kayden Burton and I'm a broker with clients in and around Santa Ana. I want to start by saying, I understand you guys have good intentions with these amendments and it's clear you've worked really hard to put all this material together. But what has been proposed with these amendments is ultimately very destructive and it's going to cost a lot of good people in this city who have fiscally, you know, supported the city for years and even generations. Instead of working with them, incentivizes relocation without disrupting business or, you know, cleaning up their operation. You're essentially punishing them at large by throwing a countdown on their operation and their livelihoods with this amortization system, which still appears to be fairly unclear. You know, there are ways to achieve your goals without performing what I'd compare to be a gradual land grab. So I hope you guys slow this thing down, foster some more collaboration between the residences and the business owners. And to the gentleman from NIOPS point, maybe it'd be helpful to look to communities like Costa Mesa that have dealt with similar issues. And they came up with really productive solutions that allow the businesses and the residents to coexist. The general plan that was adopted in 2015 incentivizes redevelopment by fast-tracking the, you know, proposal process for multifamily development projects. And it didn't thrash property values. As a matter of fact, they've gone up pretty substantially. So it allows businesses to operate until they decide to phase out and sell. Thank you.
I call forward, Michael Feeley, Tomas Castro, Thibault Weber and Charles Wynn.
Sometimes there's a disadvantage to being the last person speaking, but at the moment I'd like to just say a little bit that I'm against the moratorium and against this transition. My name is Charles Wynn. I'm also a
Can you state your name, please?
Hi, my name is Charles Wynn. I'm also a long-term commercial real estate broker. Like my colleague, Jack, we also have spent 30 years of our career in this particular neighborhood, talking to many of the property owners and the businesses alike. We've heard a lot of comments from the local business owners. I'd like to kind of talk about some of the landlords. I've been fortunate enough to hear some of them tonight. And one of the things I've also been hearing is from the residents, we have a lot of things in common with regards to, I think that most of the business owners are interested in curbing their production, curbing their disruption of the residents in the area and are willing to work with you. In this particular case, I would like to talk about landlord situations that do not own businesses and own the building strictly for income generation, long-term wealth. The quickest way, one of the things I've heard tonight, both from Commissioner Behringer and City Councilmember Ty, was that in the event of a vacancy, currently there's five or six different vacancies in this particular area that are creating homeless shelters and drug uses and whatnot that are unfettered at the moment. One of these situations, if a building becomes available or vacant, we cannot backfill it anymore. So, and there are, and my experience in the neighborhood is that they, there's several businesses looking to move out of the area based upon the fact that they cannot continue to operate there. Their tenants, they're not, there's not, no transitional business, no generational ownership. A quickest way to blighting the neighborhood and considering the fact that all these are going away, your development processes for reuse take anywhere from 12 to 15 months to get through processes. So a building will sit and continue to be vacant and uninvested and unsecuritized, which I think will be a further impact to the residents in this area if this particular ordinance goes through. I believe if you, oh, and if a building were to become available, the redevelopment cost is completely borne by the landowner. I'm against this ordinance and I'd like you to have a reconsider this and maybe continue the discussion between property owners and, property owners, residences and business owners. Thank you very much.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Thibault Weber. I'm an industrial broker here in the city of Santa Ana, Orange and Tustin. Before that, I was actually in high school at the Orange County School of the Arts studying culinary. So I've spent years in this city and I've witnessed its transformation firsthand. Many of these changes have been positive. You know, we've seen cleaner streets, growing small businesses and a stronger community. But I think that progress should not come at the expense of industry and economically it doesn't make sense. I speak with these business owners on the daily and they're worried. They're told that they can't expand. They're uncertain that they can operate on the long term and they're given very little time to adapt to these changes. And the result is business owners are left with uncertainty. And I and other brokers in this room are left without the details needed to best guide them to options that best suit their business. You know, I've had the opportunity to connect with businesses like Austin Hardwoods and Charney Marble and Stone, who bring in business from the south counties and, you know, do projects all over the nation. They call Santa Ana their home, you know, and I think that's great and we should continue that. And I also want to address something that many business owners, I think, have been quietly concerned about, but I have spoken about it over the phone and I kind of want to question what the real motives are behind these zoning changes. Because while they are framed for environmental justice, which I can partially agree with, I think the bigger picture suggests something more. And we've seen this pattern in California. Industrial zones shrink, businesses are squeezed out and suddenly those areas become high-density housing developments, often backed by Section 8 funding. And California has always had a spending problem and industrial businesses often take a backseat to projects that bring in more state and federal dollars. So I kind of wish we would touch on that a little bit. So to wrap it up, I think, you know, business owners deserve honesty and clarity. I think they deserve concrete answers, a better laid out plan and more time. Thank you.
Michael Feeley, Tomas Castro, Amy Quatch and Kelly Crossley.
Good evening. Oh, really late evening. My name is Kelly Crossley and I'm a resident of the transit zoning code. I'm also here as a board member of the Santiago Street Lofts HOA, representing our 105 homeowners and their families, many of whom can't be here tonight because of work and childcare commitments. The HOA board and I support the proposed amendments with one modification. Storage facilities are also incompatible with a transit-oriented development zone. For those of you on the commission who don't walk the neighborhood every day like I do, I brought with me a few photos that were just distributed. These photos are from just down the street from my house and I think they illustrate just how incompatible the land uses are. So in one photo, you see business patrons blocking sidewalks and the new bike lane and leaving piles of litter for city workers to come and clean. The business refuses to clean up despite outreach from the city. Our HOA pays for landscaping services to keep our sidewalks clean, but apparently if you're an industrial business, you just pass that expense on to us taxpayers. There's a photo of a line of dump trucks blocking traffic and leaving an entire intersection completely unusable while releasing air pollution down the street from the elementary school. This is the same street I rode on to get down here today and I was almost hit by a driver on the wrong side of the road, trying to get around the dozen trucks queuing on Sixth Street. And then my favorite photo, not just because it has my dog in it, is the photo of workers who parked a dump truck in a no-stopping zone on Pointzetta and proceeded to perform an oil change on a public street where they spilled oil all over the sidewalk right as my dog and I walked past. This happens on a daily basis. I've also attached an abstract from the UCI study that Margarita so kindly referenced, which found industrial zone proximity is associated with increased pediatric asthma rates. You can point to the freeways as the problem, but then why aren't we seeing the same issues just down the 5 freeway in Irvine? Those of us who actually live here have known about these forthcoming changes since the city council unanimously approved the moratorium a year ago. So please don't fall for these delay tactics. At the meeting where it was residents and business owners, the business owners were shocked and said this was the first they heard of it. Well, that tells me you don't live here and go to the city council meetings like us residents. Don't fall for their delay tactics and asking for more time. This moratorium expires in April and we need to make long overdue progress on addressing these incompatible land uses. Thank you.
Amy Quatch, Tim Rush, Michael Feeley and Tomas Castro.
Perhaps those people have left. Good evening, Chair Oliva and members of the planning commission. My name is Tim Rush. I'm about a 38-year resident of Santa Ana. I sent you all a letter this morning, which I'm sure you got, but I do have a couple additional comments. One is, why is there this rush to judgment? It is clear from people that have come here and spoken that there has hardly been a meaningful effort to outreach to these 130 property owners. And that's disturbing. It ought to be disturbing to each of you. The other question or the other comment that was revealing tonight is that it was revealed that apparently as there are 65 organized neighborhoods in the city, you've identified that half the city, roughly 30 neighborhoods, are apparently in areas where there will also be this massive change of zoning. My question is, how in the world is this city going to operate when you run off all the businesses? Because you know that businesses generate two-thirds of the income from a city and only use one-third and residents do the inverse of that. So that's the question. And, you know, it does, it does certainly seem that you guys can take a scalpel to this problem and not the 16-pound sledgehammer that seems to be the preferred tool of the day with this ordinance. So the rest of the city, the rest of the commercial industrial property owners in this city need to get ready for a massive devaluation of their properties. Because if you look at what has gone on to these folks, we're talking many, many millions of dollars that they've already lost in property value. Not a single one of them can sell their property today for what it was worth in March of last year, before this moratorium was passed on a temporary basis. You've passed a black cloud on, essentially you've passed a black cloud on all these property owners. And you can say all day long, this is not a taking, but if it walks and talks like a duck, it quacks like Donald.
Recording secretary, do we have any speakers on Zoom? We do. We have Myra Reese. Can you please unmute yourself?
Yes, hi, my name is Myra Reese and I was born and raised in Santa Ana. I have my houses in Santa Ana. I have my business in Santa Ana and I am on Logan Street. And this is going to affect me. Me and my husband started the business from the ground up. It's been about 23 years. We started very young. We were 18 and 19. And for the city that I was born in, for the city that I have given so much, for the city to just kick me in the ass, I don't think that's fair. And this has been very one-sided. Because most of the businesses have not been informed. How is this fair? My parents came from Mexico with the dream of having a better future and they had me and they gave me that idea. And for this to be happening, I am very upset. I really hope you guys talk I really hope you guys talk to the business owners. If you would actually talk to every single one, you say there's 137, 127. Talk to them. I don't think it's going to cost that much money or time. How long have you guys been doing this? You know, I think it's worth it. Talk to every single business owner. And maybe we can find an agreement and just move forward. Thank you. Have a good night.
Chair Oliva, that was the only Zoom speaker.
All right, since that was the last--
Sorry, we have an additional speaker.
Additional speaker, okay.
Mary, can you please unmute yourself? Mary, can you unmute yourself? We can't hear you. It seems that she's having technical difficulties.
We'll move forward. The public hearing is now closed. Do we have any additional questions from the Commission? Commissioner Skamia.
So used to Carl going first. All right. I guess just to start off, you know, questions for staff, you know, kind of a between two places on whether or not there is a time constraint or whether there isn't. So I guess if we can just get an answer, like, what are our actual, like, internal and kind of just procedural deadlines that we're looking at here?
The moratorium is set to expire April 15th of this year. Tonight's recommendation from staff was to recommend that the City Council take the actions outlined on the PowerPoint slide and in the staff report. As part of your actions tonight, you can approve as recommended. You can approve with modifications you'd like to see presented to City Council. You can recommend against it and enumerate why, or you can continue the item. There's a spectrum of options available to the Commission. But just for your awareness, the moratorium is set to expire again April 15th.
Okay, thank you. So again, Noah, Q and A with the audience. Appreciate that, though. Okay, so timeline-wise, and like you said, we have different options. So this is to my fellow Commissioners, you know, obviously, highly complicated item. There is, I think, a genuine consensus that we want to be as targeted as possible as to whatever the recommendation is. I deal with this stuff, you know, and kind of am very comfortable, right, in kind of the planning and zoning world. And I do think that an item like this does require additional time. And I know that at least I will benefit from having a little bit more time just to ask for specific modifications within the document. That's kind of where I'm at right now. But again, that's just kind of what I'm specifically feeling at this moment. However, obviously, we'll make motions and kind of see what to do from here. So that's just item number one. Let's see, I guess, question number two for staff. There was a small suggestion to potentially use the recommendation of adding the legal non-conforming language, I guess, as part of this SD 84. I'm assuming, but can staff enlighten me as to whether or not that was specifically not chosen so as to not be confused with another section of the code that has a legal non-conforming section that applies to areas outside of this M1 zone?
The term "non-conforming" as defined by the San Anamisbo Code is just "non-conforming." So this is for consistency with the broader terminology used by the San Anamisbo Code.
Okay, so it's actually the opposite. It is in the code. It's not legal non-conforming. Okay, perfect. Let's see. And I guess on some of these items, and I don't know where this would probably come in. This might be more in the administrative procedures afterwards. But if there is any kind of option or any kind of direction that we can have already for City Council when it comes to, I guess, the term might be encapsulation, but anything that basically prevents or encloses, you know, particular activities that are currently being done outdoors but can be limited through some sort of framework requiring coverage, right? So I guess, you know, so much of this conversation has been around the issues around Madison and where. But, you know, there are situations where in previous conflicts where these types of facilities were next to residential, there were encapsulation kind of requirements to kind of cover up existing facilities. So again, I don't know, as you develop mitigation measures, as to, you know, having those types of standards incorporated somehow. So that's where I kind of have a little bit more for those types of uses that are kind of on the periphery. We're not quite sure where they land, is it noxious or not? But that could be something to take into consideration as far as having some way forward to mitigate whatever these emissions and uses are going on onsite. So that's 2, 3, and 13. So the conversation from the public did and kind of does revolve a little bit, at least from the business owner's perspective, around the potential loss of value related to transitioning over from industrials facilities into residential. There's kind of a built-in assumption that, you know, at the very, at the end of the day, there's still going to be the land value of whatever the zoning allows for for multifamily mixed-use developments across this zone. Some of these parcels might not be, you'd say, standard, or they might require additional modifications that would make housing harder. I don't know if staff has taken any consideration as to any kind of built-in incentives to kind of speed along the process of redevelopment on some of these converted sites. So again, if we're looking at financial implications for the owners as they're no longer being used for industrial, the thing that kind of comes to mind are just state density bonuses or kind of allowances for small administrative variations that will allow development to occur on these sites. Again, it's just to try to figure out if there is anything that can help mitigate potential economic impact, or if that's been looked at at all.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. There's a myriad of options to satisfy sort of the concerns that you have here. The Transit Zoning Code as written actually contains affordable housing incentives built in. That was from the year 2010. The city's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, which has been updated from time to time since its inception, also contains its own incentives for affordable housing production. And the Transit Zoning Code itself, through having prescribed sort of objective design standards, is meant to sort of reduce the back and forth that takes place with staff when you don't have those objective design standards. I will point out that while one figure was thrown out with timing of development for a residential project, as an example of a residential project in the Transit Zoning Code, the crossroads at Washington, which just opened, was approved in two and a half months by the Planning Division, thanks to our successful efforts of getting it done in a timely manner and meeting state affordable housing deadlines. So between the sort of lining up of resources at City Hall and the sort of code-based incentives that supplement state density bonus law, there is a toolkit that's available to sort of, and meant to sort of expedite housing production that at least does contain onsite affordable housing.
Absolutely, and definitely encourage anyone that's looking at housing development to take advantage of all those. But I guess it would be like in addition, but also just to ensure that we don't have any sort of redundant parcels. Because I know whenever we have these large drastic changes, there might be certain size requirements for developments of a certain scale. And I do think that having as much flexibility there will also kind of mitigate the most negative impacts of this. But again, those are the types of like specific suggestions that we'd like to include, like, before it goes to council. But it's, I think, I'd have to assess whether we decide to take more time on it or if we'd like to kind of approve as-is or whatever modifications we can agree to up here.
Commissioner Van?
You know, I'm always open to providing extensions if necessary. My main concern is, and I'll just offer as a caveat, is that if we are to extend it, there needs to be firm deliverables, right? I don't like the idea of extending for the sake of extending because ultimately, we extend it another month, extend it another two months, there's always someone that's going to say that's not enough time. And which is, you know, there's never enough time, right? So there needs to be firm deliverables if we were to extend these discussions. And I would feel more comfortable having these extensions if these deliverables or these asks, you know, are agreed by staff as well. Because, you know, if we were going to ask for more meetings or we're going to ask for more community outreach, it needs to be congruent with what staff has provided, right? How much meetings are enough, right? How many meetings are enough, right? And how do we enforce whether or not business owners attend, right? So there needs to be metrics and deliverables. If those metrics and deliverables are reasonable and they inform our decisions, right? If they don't inform our decision, then it is just a way to kind of add more volume to the amount of information that we need to digest, then it might be counter-- counter-effective. Beyond that, that's my commentary on that. Beyond that, I think there's been a lot of language from both the business owners and the residents that, you know, you can't operate with these uncertainties, right? And nothing causes more uncertainty than dragging something out that you know will need to be determined, right? Whether or not we drag this on for another month, two months, three months, ultimately, there needs to be a decision that's made. Whether or not you consider these uncertainties not something that will affect your business, that's for you to decide. But my analysis of it is that I think that as a business owner, you would need certainty to operate your business whether or not that decision end up being in your favor or against you. But ultimately, it's better for your planning and future forward planning than just showing up every other Monday to plead your case and not knowing what is going to be delivered. And as for the residents, I understand as well, you need the certainty to know kind of the safety of your families and what to do next. So my suggestion is that we operate in the sense that whoever delivers certainty to the residents and to the business owners, I think that might be the most beneficial to everyone here.
Commissioner Van, Commissioner Wu, sorry.
I was ready to vote and send it up to Senate Council. But I think when it get there, it's going to be more political than he or I and everyone realize, okay? And I changed my mind because Joe Andrade came and reminded me about Sam and Shepah. And I remember going to your house and sitting in the neighborhood. I also remember Miguel wanting his little glory little trolley to go through nowhere. And turning this area into a transit area didn't seem like the goal that we really wanted back then. But now that we have it, the question is, is this realistic for our time? We have a change in government in Washington, DC. This sucks and going crazy. We don't know what money is going to come down here for us to achieve thing. We don't know Section 8 housing. I've been fighting for affordable housing back when there was the urban reinvestment task where we sat with the Federal Home Loan Bank and the FDIC. And we created a crafting method of getting more money out to revitalize neighborhood and came out with Neighborhood Housing Services. But that money may not be there for the building of neighborhood. Community services block grant may not be there. Community development block grant may not be there. We have exceeded arena of gold, right? By 2,000% or whatever. We've done a great job. We get accolades for the affordable housing and apartment houses that we have built, okay? Time is to think, like, can we keep afford to be building housing and be the only one in the county doing it? You know, where do we get the water, you know? So there's an infrastructure thing. Then Mike got up and talked, and Bob Adam and talked about from prospective businesses that want to get-- that respect the neighborhood. And I think there's some time, because we spent a lot of time going out and talking to the resident, and we had documentation of that. Not enough time has gone to like, see if we could come up with some more solution that encompasses a transition for the businesses. Because if you looked at that picture of where the new housing come up to the old business, the question is, who was there first? And we built all these new businesses that doesn't have a history in the neighborhood like Joe and Shepah and Sammy, okay? They were there because, you know, they were placed there because no one wanted them downtown and in the other part of town. And they built a freeway there. So we discombobulated this whole neighborhood. We're trying to fix it. Staff has done an excellent job of putting together the skeleton, the structure, the steel, you know, the framework, the enforcement and all that. The only thing is, I don't think there's an agreement out there to live with that. And there will be legal challenges, which is why you're so careful in linking it to the AQND and other kinds of things to make sure the language fits and, you know, clarifying orders, typo and all that. So I don't think we're quite there yet. I wish we were today so that we can, that everyone is not afraid and not suspicious, you know, on both sides. One side, I don't think that you like them enough. The other side, I don't think, that both sides don't trust you. And yet, you spend a lot of time on this. And I'm not integrating staff. I really appreciate what you've done on the legal side and on planning side and on the neighborhood initiative side. You guys don't know how much work has been done. And I wish we could go forward, but I don't think we're there unless we have a community support. Why don't we go in there together and support the same vision, okay? And I want to see that. So we still have a meeting in March. I would like to postpone until they have a March meeting to make a final decision. And hopefully, we could build more consensus. I think there's one quick consensus we could do. And that is remove the M2 overlay, okay? On the M1, I'm not sure what you could do with that. And the amortization doesn't seem to satisfy some comfort, you know, and trust that there would be a fair process to allow what businesses can continue as M1 and all that. So, and I know why the reasoning, because I asked you earlier, you know, if we remove it blankly, what would happen? And all we got was speculation of what that might mean, okay? And I'd like to know a little more definitively what that might mean, you know? And if there's another solution where you could have M1, but you really define what that could be under what circumstances is conforming and non-conforming. Because there was a point of time where the businesses and the community were in sync. The community said, okay, you could stay here if you allow us to have housing and development. And you got your housing, right, Joe? You got new building houses in the neighborhood. I think on the other side, the businesses still like to operate that operate in good faith. But like you say, there are some that don't, you know? The one that is putting oil in the street really, some of them need to go after them. But some of the problems created by homeless people, you can't put on the business. You know, I don't think the businesses want those homeless people, you know, throwing stuff and camping out as well. So, you know, there's a mutual desire there to have a nice neighborhood without crime and all that. Margarita made the best argument and talked about, here's all the complaints we get, and this is why we're having to address it. And that's the thing that I want the community and the business to understand. We're trying to address the question. We have a framework. We have processes in place. We have the legal languages. We just don't have anyone's support to go forward, unfortunately.
Commissioner Benninger?
Thank you very much. As you see, I have my power back on and I'm back connected to you.
Thank you very, very much. As you see, I have my power back on and I'm back connected to you. And they're right on target with the startup time. Anyway, Alan Wu and I have been friends for a number of years and we've been able to have disagreements and still come out as friends and smile in the end. There's not many times I get to say this, but Alan, you are right on the target tonight. I feel for the residents. I really feel for the businesses because they're looking to lose something. And before I want to take something away from someone, whether it be residents or business, I'd like to have a good understanding that, that what's gonna happen. And right now, we don't have the certainty, except the fact that this as written eventually will eliminate all businesses in the area. And so I agree with delaying this. I would recommend 60 days. And during that time, what I'd like to hear back in the discussion is someone from the financial group for the city to talk to us what this option will do to us if we approve it, if we modify it, what have you. I also would like meetings with the businesses. I know of only one meeting the businesses have. And though the lady talked about this has been for almost a year, and I agree with her, it was April last year. And I attended a lot of council meetings, as you guys well know, and I'm involved president of, of CommLink. These meetings really been held with residential's. And one of Lacy's neighborhood the other day, I got the flyer at my house and it didn't identify who was having the meeting. Just come and hear the progress against eliminating polluting businesses. That's all that was on the flyer, time and place. To me, that's looking for one-sided answers. And in this case, we need to be fair. One thing they taught me at the, uh, planning meeting is to be fair. And I don't think this as written is, is fair. I think the limitations on timing is not fair. I think on the residents, the disgusting things you have to live with are not fair either. So let's take this fair. Let's take time. This is major, major change. I do commend staff. They've done a lot of work. And you're really trying to correct a lot of problems that you've inherited, had nothing to do with what you have done. And so rather than make a rush to, to judgment decision and get it wrong, let's take the additional time. Let's meet with businesses. That would be my input. And let's have the Catherine Downs come talk to us about the financials of what happens one way or the other. This doesn't mean that I put people's health below financial. All I'm saying is let's get all the, everything out there that we can speak of. And I do am concerned, if I had in my neighborhood, some of the problems that I heard tonight from the residents, yes, I would be, you know, wanting to change something. And so with that, I'm going to recommend, in fact, I'm going to propose a 60-day delay for a chance for businesses to, to meet and for us to discuss financial issues.
I would like to chime in just to say that I appreciate everyone who's come out to speak, residents and businesses. But I want to believe that this, the folks that are coming from the business side aren't saying, you know, pro pollution, let us pollute. We know that there's bad actors and we know that there are things we do need to fix so that the quality of life of not just the residents, but the business owners that do spend all their time in this area as well, that everyone is breathing fresh air. Everyone's breathing non-polluted air, no dust and things of that nature. But keeping in mind quality of life, the fact that families do live here, families are also investing in the area. Some, someone made a great point that some families just can't move out of this area and they're in a disadvantaged area. Cause it's, that's how it was essentially programmed for them. I do like the idea that Commissioners Scamia and Commissioner Fam have, have brought forward about sitting a little bit longer with the actual ordinance, but giving a timeline that has deliverables that gives us time that to review the, the text itself and also gives staff time to, to, to do what they need to do in order to get some sort of, some sort of support on this ordinance. I don't know what, what meetings would look like, if it would be one joint meeting with businesses and residents, or if it would be two.
I, I was wondering, we have meeting in March. I mean, 60 days seemed like a lot. I think we're a lot closer than we think. Because the, I heard some forward progress from some business people saying that we agree with certain thing, but they're not sure. And I think that if staff was to meet with them, maybe we'd get some more clarity. We're a lot closer than what we think. So 60 days is a lot. If we could do about a March meeting, if, if you guys could, because you had to set up the meeting, bring everyone together. For the residents, I think we're, we're there with them in terms of what is in the language for their protection. I'm concerned with overdevelopment of housing in the area now, but that's a whole nother issue.
Commissioner Scamia.
Yeah, no, and I'd appreciate Carl's, Commissioner Benninger's willingness to, to go that, that long. And Alan, I, I think to your point, we probably are a lot more closer than, than 60 days. And then I guess just kind of working backwards. Cause I, I don't want this to be something that's also then like ambushed on the city council. So if they have to decide by April 15th, I think that's their, their, their meeting date. And I just don't know if it expires in the morning or in the evening, or like if they have to make the decision that night, if they met on the 15th. Or, yeah, that's a question for staff really quick.
If I'm hearing the commission correctly, if I can make a recommendation, it does appear that there are some share commonalities between the residents and the business owners. But before I make my recommendation, I want to provide some information as to the outreach that has been done. The number of meetings that we have had with both business owners and residents in the area as well as part of the overall zoning code comprehensive zoning code updates. As Marguerite mentioned earlier in her PowerPoint, we have had over 16 meetings with business owners, residents and interested stakeholders, including brokers, some of which were here present tonight, including neighborhood leaders as well as, you know, business, industrial business, affected industrial business owners, many of which we have met with personally, a few of which we have actually visited on site to ensure that every single property owner and every single occupant of a building in the transit zoning code is informed of what's going on. Notices of our community meetings, notices regarding the study session by the commission and notice of this hearing was sent to over 3,500 receiver, right, in, in the mail. So needless to say that we spent a significant amount of time ensuring that we inform the community and allow every opportunity for the community to participate in our discussion. Having said that, again, we have met with many of the business stakeholders and the residents have, have made changes to this ordinance that we have felt that even since the last time we met on February 10th, there's been a number of revision made that we believe have addressed many of the concerns to ease some of the transition, but also making sure that some of the businesses can actually stay. The question is too, whether or not M1 is the appropriate zoning and eliminate just M2. I would just read one land use to you. Okay, maybe my, hang on a second here, please. So a permitted use in the M1 zone, permitted, not conditionally permitted, storage and distribution of hazardous materials. Permitted use in the M1 zone. So we believe that what we have proposed addresses many of the concerns. However, hearing the commission, what I would recommend is that what we could do is meet with both the business owners and the residents in a meeting in the next week and potentially come back to the commission. We would request that we allow the city council the most lead time available. And having this first meeting of the planning commission in March, I think maybe too late for that lead time. If we can request a special meeting that the commission would entertain for March 5th and then allow us to, between now and March 5th, to really sit down with the folks here that are here tonight. I think out of the 3,500 folks that were notified of the meeting, the most interested folks are the ones that are here tonight, both from the community in terms of residents and the business owner. We do have everyone's contact. We will reach out to every single person that has made it to this meeting here today. And have a meeting next week or even later this week, even on the weekend if we need to in order to make sure everyone can attend. I think it's incumbent upon us to do that. And if that's the desire of the commission, we can do that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say I'm not available on March 5th specifically, did provide that to staff, but I will be willing to be here on a Saturday or Sunday.
I'd be willing to do my fifth, but what I'd like to also add to that is that I think there's some agreement. If, if we could agree to eliminate the M2 and no one seemed to be against it, then start with that agreement. If there's other way to, to address the M1 issue, to get what, what, what we need to not have all these conflicts. So then let's, let's get as much agreement as possible.
We hear you.
Then I think we could solidly recommend with a consensus to go to city council that is agreed upon by both sides.
Is there a date if March 5th doesn't work? Is there a date Thursday, March 6?
I'm available.
Sunday, March 8th. March, Sunday. March 9th, I'm sorry, this Sunday.
I think we're trying to find a date that's earlier in order to give city council some, some time to also review whatever edits are, are made.
I understand March 6 has a historic resources commission that's in this room, correct? What about March 7th, which is a Friday?
I'm not available on March 7th and Friday. I am available to 5th.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Benninger, can you repeat that?
Yes, I just said I'm not available Friday, March 7th. I am available March 5th.
Maybe the 4th and 5th.
Commissioner Fam?
Anytime that week is fine with me.
Sure, Oliver.
I can make anytime that week work.
I will skip historic commission to be at a planning commission on the 4th, sorry, the, the 6th. But I'm not available, but I can make it work on the 3rd or Friday.
Either way, we'll still need corn, right? So Friday will be missing Commissioner Benninger, but maybe Commissioner Leo will be present. Wednesday will be missing Commissioner Escamia, but then Commissioner Leo might be present. So we just need to make sure that.
Yeah, we have Sunday, the 2nd.
My, my understanding is that the HRC commission on March 6th is on the light side and could potentially be completed within two hours from the time, start time of 4:30. If the commission is willing to attain a start time of 6:30 for that meeting night, can have a special meeting adjourned to that night in that time.
6:30 on March 6th.
Yes.
Okay.
I can make.
And that will work. And we don't need to all, all the presentation again, because we already heard everything.
You have completed your presentation of the item by staff. You have completed the intake of public testimony. You have also engaged in some level of discussion. If there are any additional deliverables as commissioners here have asked of staff to bring back in terms of what you would like to see at the March 6 meeting. One deliverable I knows is to at least meet with both, to have one meeting with the business owners and the residents in the area one final time to discuss the regulation as it, as proposed here and to come back with the result of that meeting. If there's any other deliverables that you would like to provide directions to staff on, I would like certainly like to hear.
And at your discretion, whatever you need to make sure that we dot the dots and cross the T in term of legally ready to make a motion.
We have done so here tonight, but absolutely will continue to do so in the future.
Can I just add that if you are to engage the residents or business owners, especially the ones are present here today, I would like to request, if possible, on the next time that we do meet, if we have a cross-reference of who was present here today, who you've met with that were here today, just so that we understand how committed everyone who have spoken here today and their commitment to meet with you again, to express whatever concern they might have. I think that'll give us a little bit more color on kind of the volume of, of community feedback, if, if that was for you.
We certainly have a list of, a number of interested persons here tonight. And we will outreach to that group specifically, as well as the residents that have spoken tonight here as well.
All right, thank you.
Or the audience can leave the name and number here.
Commissioner Benninger, did you want to share something?
Yes, I'd like to add to this. I have complete support. I can make the 6th also. 6:30 started is not a problem. But I'd like to add too, that I think we do need to understand from a financial, what are, what are we voting on? And so I'd like to have Catherine Downs come and tell us what financially is the city could be looking at by approving or not approving this, this, this change on it. And I would like to throw that in there all, also. And I'd like to add one more thing. The legal that I sought and I discussed at the planning group was really concerned that this was a tape. And so I really like to hear more from legal, how they feel this is defendable in court as, as written.
Understood, thank you. We'll add that as a deliverable as well.
All right, Chair. So I guess with that, I guess like to make the motion to continue with the, to the March 6th at 6:30.
It would be for a special hearing and is a continuance of this meeting to March 6th at 6:30 here at the City Hall, City Council Chambers.
Is there a motion?
I second that.
I'll make, I've made the motion, I guess, yeah.
First motion from Commissioner Scamia and a second from Commissioner Benninger. Secretary, can you please call for a roll call vote?
Commissioner Benninger?
Aye.
Commissioner Scamia?
Aye.
Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Fam?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ramos? Chair Oliva?
Aye.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioner Leo and Vice Chair Ramos absent.
And for clarity, the item regarding zoning ordinance amendment number 2024-02 and amendment application number 2024-03, amending certain sections of Article 19, the Transit Zoning Code, Specific Development Number 84 for Chapter 41 of the San Ana Municipal Code addressing industrial land uses, nonconformities and operating standards and amending the, the city of San Ana zoning map to remove the light industrial and heavy industrial suffixes from certain properties within SD-84 district. Boundary is hereby continued to the special meeting on Thursday, March 6th at 6:30 PM. That concludes the public hearing. Moving to staff comments. Does the commission have any?
May I, before you move on to staff comment, I just wanted do one more round of confirmation. What I heard and what staff heard tonight is that there are three deliverables that I hear. One is a financial analysis on the potential impact of this action on properties in the transit zoning code. While I don't, while I don't believe a comprehensive analysis can be completed, what I would share is that we will talk to our finance department to provide any information that we can bring back on that. In terms of the second ask is for analysis on the potential taking issue. Correct? And then the third is for us to meet with the business owners, interested business owners and residents who specifically show up here tonight and any other interested parties that have shown interest in this process.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I would like to clarify, if I may, it's not so much on property values because they're going to do what they're going to do. I'm more concerned to affect to the city. What revenues are we going to lose? How much are we going to lose?
Got it. Financial impact of the city on the loss of businesses in terms of tax and
Correct.
revenues. Got it. Thank you for clarifying that. I'm glad I spoke on.
And I'd like to state for the audience that this staff, these staff are accountable and, and they, they don't, they don't, they don't have an issue or a way that they want to go. They're just, they're just doing their job. They're very professional at it.
Could I, could I also make a note, just with respect to the request that was made by the commissioner? The legal advice that would be provided would likely be confidential, but we will provide that information to you, more analysis. Depending on what information is provided by the members of the public. They've not provided, they've not well articulated any specific claims, but we'll try to gather that and we'll provide more information to you.
Thank you for the clarity. Commissioners Camilla.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you for that legal counsel, and I'm forgetting your last name. I'm sorry.
Crossway.
Right, Crossway, sorry. Yeah, because I guess it would be the confidential reporting, but whatever can be included for the public of just wasn't analyzed or, you know, whatever, yeah.
That's what we'll do. We'll add some, to the extent, general information. We already provided some, but we'll augment that. And then more additional analysis will be provided to you that way. Thank you.
Commissioner Pham, Commissioner Wu, any comments for staff?
Just want to double check. This was, this is publicly available, the the multiple pages with responses from the last commission here, right?
Yes, that's available on the project webpage.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Comments?
Yeah, I done, I think they've done a good job. I wish we could have gone forward. I just didn't sense that the community was ready. But I think that with a little more talking, we'll have everyone agree.
Commissioner Benninger, any final comments?
Yes, you know, we, this has been a good open discussion. I really want to thank staff for the hard work that they've done. And I'm glad that we've been able, the only way we're going to get workable results is an open discussion like this. So though we may not agree, I have, I definitely agree with the work's been done. And Chairman, I want to thank you for running a very effective meeting. Thank you.
I have no comments except for staff. Thank you so much for putting this presentation together. As always, y'all make it so that we can understand what we're looking at, what we're trying to do, and we're just trying to find that, that middle ground where we agree. Does, does, does staff have anything for, for the commission?
Thank you for sitting through a long night of public comments and public hearing. And you have provided a number of good directions to us, at least for us to move forward. So appreciate that and I hope you have a great night.
That adjourns this meeting. The next regular meeting is scheduled for March 10th, 2025 at 5:30 PM.